Hello, I have the time at 6:03. I'm gonna go ahead and call this special meeting to order. If you could please see and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Houston, if you could please take the role.
Good evening, everyone. Mrs. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
Mr. Raymert.
Here.
This is a special meeting of the German Township trustees, the purpose of which is to meet with representatives from the city of Germantown, the village of Farmersville, and Jackson Township to discuss a proposed joint economic development district, a JED, at the southwest corner of Manning Road in Germantown-Farmersville Pike for land owned by Valleyview School District.
Thank you, Mr. Houston. It looks like we have representatives maybe from all jurisdictions or most of them. So at this time, I will open it up for discussion. I know we had a pretty lengthy discussion last time we were here regarding the JED. We left with some, I guess, questions or thoughts. So I don't know if anyone wants to start us off tonight about the JED or thoughts that they've had since we met last. And that was my mistake. I should have asked for visitor comments or questions at the beginning of the meeting. So if we have visitor comments or questions, and just like last time, if you have them throughout the meeting, if you could please put it in the chat, and then we will make sure that we get to you. So do we have any visitor comments or questions at this time? Not seeing anyone unmute. I am not seeing any visitor comments or questions. Like I said, if you do have some throughout the meeting, please feel free to type in the chat so that we know that you have questions, and we will get to them. At this time, now, do we have anything from any of the representatives that are here from the various jurisdictions about maybe things that they discussed once they are all four? Oh, I'm sorry. That they took back to their entities and discussed. And Mrs. Cross says, are all four entities represented tonight? And is the attorney present? So I know we have here representative from Germantown Township, Farmersville, obviously Germantown Township is represented. I am not sure about Jackson Township. I see we have a call-in user three, but I'm not sure if that's the Jackson Township representative or not. That could also be the attorney.
They were.
He was gonna be calling in from a 513 number.
On our end, sorry, on our end, last time it came in, I think, as a call-in user, though, and not necessarily her phone number. So I'm not sure. I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure which one it was. So to answer your question, it does not appear.
Okay. It's Brenda. I am here.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yeah, so the attorney is present, but we do not have a representative from Jackson Township. So with that, do we have any other entities that want to speak? Maybe they took some things back to their jurisdictions and have some things to share or thoughts?
I'll kick things off. There was a couple of questions last time. Let's see here. Regarding the credit, the tax credit. So I went back and looked at the documentation I received from, I wanna say it was 2017, maybe 2018. We did not get a number for the primary building, which is probably the biggest, I would guess. But as far as the intermediate and the high school, per the school, there was 20 Germantown residents that work at those schools. So that was 24 out of, or I'm sorry, 20 out of 84 from those two buildings. And then the primary, it's kind of an unknown, but using sort of the percentage. So it was 10 of 29 from the intermediate and 10 of 55 from the high school. So that would be 20 of 84. Using just the average, that you would assume that's roughly 24% probably live in Germantown across all buildings. So that was one item to follow up on. Let's see. What else? So I also calculated based on that figure what our likely estimated revenue would be from those people that are paying a credit to the city. From the, let's see here. From the primary building, that came out to around 7,000. From the intermediate building, that was estimated at 4,500. And from the high school, that was estimated at 8,000. Now, the high school, for those employees that are working at the high school and living in Germantown, they're paying the full one and a half right now. So actually, when they go to a single site and pay into a JED, that 8,000 drops down, based on my estimate, to around 3,200. So we would still see revenue. It would just, it would drop a little more than half. So in my mind, I would be perfectly fine going in, taking, and I'll get these numbers to you guys, the spreadsheet that I'm working from right now is kind of a mess. But I'll clean it up and send it to everybody here. The, if we end up taking that out, it's about a $19,600 reduction initially. And then when the high school changes to a single side, it'd be a little less than that. So something between 15,000 and 20,000 that we could actually knock off from what we were initially saying was our share. So we can actually take that down because we will still see some of that credit. Now, again, I'm not gonna get hung up on exact numbers only because, given these were 2018 numbers, it's probably gonna change. Probably already has changed. People are gonna move around, whatever. But we can, and I would be more than willing to take that, to drop that percentage down. One other comment. So last time, we, I think we spent a lot of time talking about a school resource officer. So one thing I had was, if we, I cannot even, it's a bad idea. I absolutely agree, the school should have a school resource officer, especially when they go to a single site. It only makes sense. I don't necessarily know that we should fund it, but if we wanted to fund it, I don't know how this would work, and Brenda weigh in if you think this is out of line, but we could take some of that construction revenue, 250,000, whatever. You know, we were, we were gonna split it up sort of four ways. Take the construction revenue, or take all of it, whatever, put it in a bucket, assign it to the JED. The JED can release it once the single site is up and running, and that money can be spent on a school resource officer. So they would release, I assume, they would release that money to you. You all could use that money not only for salary, but use the money for, they're probably gonna need a car, they'll need, you know, uniforms, whatever else. And the construction revenue is sort of, it's sort of in and above what anyone expected, right? So set it aside, if that's what we really wanna do, set it aside and, and use it for that SRO. And you figure with the, with a starting salary of 35,000 roughly, plus benefits and everything else, I mean, that could last a long time, especially if it was $500,000. Now, I think Mr. Richards, last time we met, said their estimate was, I think he threw out between four and five. So it may not be full of five. We've been using five just for planning. Anyway, just a thought. I didn't wanna take money away from anybody else, if we decide that's what we wanna do. That could be an option, and it could probably last us, I don't know, 10 or 15 years. So those are the two things I wanna follow up on. I'm gonna go back on mute here and see what else I had in my notes.
All right. So with the resource officer, either there's a resource officer, Germantown Township's gonna have an extra officer. One or the other has to happen. It's, it's not a question. It's, it's a fact. It has to happen. When talking to the police department's police chief, with the, with this JED and the money that's being collected, if we go long-term, which I still think it should be a short-term construction only, if we go long-term and we are, thank you, if we are collecting this revenue from the school employees, it is the police department's feeling that the resource officer should be paid for at 75%. I know Mr. Hodson from Jackson Township asked for us. I forwarded that to him, if I could find it here someplace. The police department went through, they added up yearly salary, OPERS, Medicare, health insurance, vision, dental, uniform, 75%. And then they picked just a, just an officer's salary that is one of our current officers that's been here a while, just so we weren't short and just so we weren't high. And the number they came up with was, with everything included, is $103,532. So 75% of that is 77,000 plus, or right, 77,000. And the police department is required, requesting that this is, this is a must for the JED to go through for Germantown Township, for the police department's budget, it's the police department's perspective. So it may seem like a high number, but that's just, I mean, it's what it's gonna cost. The reason the judge should be paying for it is, we've talked about this before, having a purpose for this JED, which we can discuss again if we need to, but having a resource officer paid for by the JED is, is a purpose, and it gives validity to what we're trying to do, if this is what we're trying to do. Now, if we wanna go short-term, like I would prefer, we just split it 25% each, do construction only. It gives us years, a couple of years to figure out what we need to do. And we go from there. So I, I'm just gonna be blunt, because I don't wanna sit here for three hours and get nowhere again. If we're going to do short-term, I'm fine with it. If we're going to do long-term, it's going to include 75% of a resource officer, or I, I have no problem voting no on this. This is just where it's at. It's numbers. It's the benefit of the township. We can't take a loss on this. So we can divide the rest of the money up however it needs to be, but I think a priority should be a resource officer, and it should not be to make the other entities whole, as has been stated multiple times in the last couple of meetings.
Mr. So, I'm sorry. Just out of curiosity, the number that you threw out there, you said, what would be the year salary for the police officer? Because that's, that's the first time that I'm hearing that number. So I'm just curious, I'm looking at the salaries from the police officers. Do, can, can you tell me that as far as the steps or? Sorry, I need to mute.
The yearly salary is 56,800. And then when you add OPERS, Medicare, health insurance, dental, vision, uniform, that's where it adds up the rest of the way.
So that salary is a step-five supervisor position, which is the second highest, no, the highest salary that we have as a police department for the township. Well, I, nope, it is not. It is the highest supervisor one that we have. So I just think we need to be realistic when we're throwing out these numbers, that maybe it needs to be middle-of-the-road and not a top-of-the-line step-five supervisor that we're using as our starting out. Actually, it's above, it's actually above the supervisor by $700.
Right. So we're using a salary of a current officer, not a supervisor, is what they used to come up with these numbers. And I know you know that we've had several officers who've been here a long time, so their salaries are higher because they've been here, you know, a significant amount of time and do a fantastic job for us. So it is a current officer's salary, not a supervisor. And I don't know what more to say.
I have their salary scale. Actually, I got it maybe three weeks ago. And so unless I'm being forwarded the incorrect thing from the township about salaries, that, that's not the paperwork that I would receive from the police department.
Just to be honest, two things. One, I think what you were saying, Mr. Stubbs, is it's all in. It's got all their benefits and everything. It's not just base salary. It's all the other stuff, too. It's ancillary. But, I mean, at the end of the day, your, your point is 75% of the, the police officers. What, the, the only thing I would say, just to make sure I fully understand, because I don't, I don't disagree. I, I fully understand this piece that you've been on since the start of this, is no taxing without some kind of benefit that we're providing back to, totally understand. I think there's gonna be other things that we do for the school district outside of what we see beyond just the police officer piece of it. And so that's my, my thing from this whole beginning, is that I think that this isn't taxation without representation. I think that we're going to have to provide services to the school in a broader way in the future, and I don't wanna get in a situation where we don't have that foresight and then have to incur cost here and, and aren't able to front those costs with something coming in on the revenue side. And that may be the case, if we can't agree, and we just need to understand that. But on the SRO, I think it's the same exact point, is if we can't make an agreement that we need to support an SRO or do anything to get to the JED piece, you said we're going to have to give them something for a police officer, no matter what. So if we don't get a JED, we're going to have to front all that cost, 100%. So it, I think that's the only part of your, your point that I don't fully understand, is you either said short-term or we're going long-term at 75%. Well, that's a pretty brass place to stand and then know that if the JED gets turned down, you just told everybody in Germantown Township that we're going to have to front a police officer, no matter what, and you're willing to cover that 100% because we couldn't come to an agreement.
So we will get a police officer, most likely during the day, you know, in the area, because we'll have the rest of the township to cover. So you're looking at the, the days of school, I mean, same, same basic salary.
Yeah.
But it's, yeah, it would be covered by our police department, which is, is our job. It's, it's our community, and that's what their, their job is to do, just like fire a mess.
Yeah. And that's what I think we need to tell the township, is you're willing that if you can't get at least 75% of it paid through the JED, you're willing to get none of it paid, and us just take that on the chin. That's your choice.
I mean, that's a bold statement for you, too. I mean, you guys have accused me of stuff the last couple of meetings, which is ridiculous. And I'm glad we're doing this face-to-face tonight, because I think it's easier to do it from behind a computer than it is upfront. But the point is, if we can't collect income tax, that's a fact, right? Germantown Township, no township in Ohio can collect income tax. When you create a JED, you're opening up a can of worms, especially since we've said multiple times, the purpose of this JED is to make Germantown whole, make Farmersville whole. I, I mean, is that how you guys feel about it? Because, and then we divide the rest of it up after the fact. I don't think that's the correct purpose. So, and that's, and that's where the issue is. I, I don't think that's a correct purpose of what the JED is.
I have no problem with that. I have no issue whatsoever, because at the end of the day, that, that shouldn't be the sole purpose of the, of the JED, right? It shouldn't be to make the townships whole. It should be to think about what's coming in the future, what services have to be provided, and what's reasonable to do. Or I would say, I wanna step back, because you talked about accusing, doing face-to-face. I, I've made no accusations. What I just said was exactly repeating your words. Okay. Okay, fair enough. But at the end of the day, I, I, I too love that we're face-to-face, because I, I wanna work together to make sure we're doing what's right for the community. I wanna look you in the eye when we talk about these things. I, I have no issue with where you stand. I wanna make sure that we all understand, though, if we turn this down, this opportunity, that in truth, has been debated for 10 years, right? I mean, this goes back a long time ago. The JED was on the doorstep many of years ago, and so we're back to the precipice of it again. I think we've done the due diligence to some degree, but I think we'd need to really think this through. If we decide not to do this, every time it's been turned down in the past, it was at a point in time where the school, we might not have gone through. The school has been through. The school is moving. It's going down the tracks. Now it's on us. So whether we wanna make the decision to make sure that we prepare ourselves to cover whatever expenses we may have, and I, I trust you on the SRO. You're over the police department here, right? So it's your responsibility. I take you at your word. If you say it's $100,000, that, that's fine. I trust you. But what I would say is, we need to be very careful at making a hard, solid line of either we give them the, give ourselves the $75,000 to cover that, or we'll just take it on the chin and cover it ourselves. Because I think, I think your point exactly is, if we're going to incur that, we do have a responsibility to the school district. We are incurring expenses, and we should be remunerated for those expenses.
And just to follow up with the, the numbers, I, I asked Chief Anzig and Lori, that, that, I didn't make those numbers up. They came straight from the police department. I had nothing to do with it.
Yeah, I'm not accusing you of anything there. Yeah, fair.
Yes, Mrs. Cross, sorry. I was gonna let them finish before I interrupted with a comment. Mrs., I'm sorry. It would be Mr. Cross. I just.
It's actually, it's actually me. So the first question, unfortunately, Ben Richards is not here, but again, has hiring a school resource officer been bought before the, the school board? Because as of last meeting, it was not. Does anyone have any idea whether they are considering having one, whether they need one?
My recollection of, of Mr. Richards' comment and the people that were here last time, representing the entities, was that it has been kicked around, if you will, but at this, it wasn't something that I think was on the front burner for them, that they thought was a imminent thing, that they felt that they needed right now. I mean,
Yeah, so that, that.
That was my feeling on it. They weren't saying, we have to have one. This is number-one priority for us. So they were hoping sometime in the budget, they would be able to fund it. But obviously, boards change, and they don't know, in their five-year forecast, what that really looks like. So at this time, they don't have a resource officer on the plan, but, and they didn't, I don't wanna speak for him. I'm not sure he necessarily felt as if they 100% needed one. But again, I don't wanna speak for Mr. Richards. That's just the feeling that I got from Mr. Richards last time.
Yeah, so I guess, in the, am I, am I okay here? So in the future, if they do need, decide that they need a school resource officer, shouldn't that be in the school budget, not, not paid for by, by us? But, so let me, let me get back to what Jake was bringing up. So I actually talked to Chief Anzig on the 11th of November, and I asked him if there was any discussion concerning hiring a school resource officer. And he said they would probably reassign a road officer so that, to that duty, and possibly have to hire another officer if possible, depending on the reimbursement from the JED. So Germantown Township would be paying the benefits also. And that officer would probably be responsible for security at the basketball games. The football games are the responsibility of Germantown, the city of Germantown. And if there is no school resource officer, basically Germantown Township would have jurisdiction of the new building. He didn't see any, didn't foresee any additional costs, even if they didn't have a SRO. Only, and the only time Jackson Township would be involved, if Germantown Township was busy and couldn't respond to a call. And you can't see that happening as an expense to the JED either. So basically, he said, his, his opinion was that even with all the, the students at one building, Germantown Township could handle that as far as their manpower right now, because there's so few calls to the school buildings. So I guess my question is, why is the SRO even being considered? If the school wants one down the line, they can hire out of their budget. It should have nothing to do with the JED, in my opinion. Again, and it doesn't sound, from the chief's comments, it doesn't sound like, like they, it sounds like they would be able to handle any calls to the new, new building. So that, that is my comment and question.
I don't wanna speak for Mr. Stubbs, but I, I think what, what I was taking away from what your comment was, was we, we need to have a contribution, Mr. Cross, for the JED to fly. And so we can contribute a SRO, which would eliminate the need for the township to have an additional officer then. And then the JED would have a, a reason for it, because if you don't have an SRO, if we don't provide the SRO through the JED, we have to come up with some other contribution, which is fine, and we can do that. But then we also have to fund the, the police officer and come up with an additional contribution. So that was my understanding, was the SRO was a way to contribute something and then not need an additional police officer on the, on the road force or whatever here at the township.
Okay. Well, just taking it from the ORC 715.72, which explains the JED. The contributions may be in any form to which the contracting parties agree. And that may include, but are not limited to the provision of services, money, real or personal property, facilities or equipment. So the, the contribution to each entity, as, as was discussed, I think, earlier, could be to pay for the lawyer's bills that are gonna be pretty high after all this. So there's no, nothing in the, in the JED ORC document that says that, that we have to contribute anything other than we could just contribute money. So to, to say that the SRO would have to be our contribution is untrue.
Well, I, hold on a second. I, this is Jake. I, I, I don't think the, the officer would be our contribution to the JED. I think the JED has no purpose in itself, in its state of purpose in the Ohio revise code. The reason is to have a JED, and I know we've gone over this before, and I think it's, it's a, the attorney who's on the call said it was a stretch. So that's a separate issue. So we've discussed legal fees divided evenly amongst the four entities as, as the contribution for each entity. The purpose of the JED, which I believe is in question, is solved by having a resource officer, not, not the contribution from the township.
Okay.
Mr. Cross, you are right, though. I mean, okay. Mr. Cross is correct, though. I mean, we, we could not do anything with an SRO. We could pay for an extra police officer here, and then we could make a contribution from the JED of $10,000. But the point, I think, is, Mr. Cross, if I'm understanding correctly, is we would then be paying the money for the police officer here out of Germantown Township and contributing money on, on top of that. So it's a way to do this more cost-efficiently if you do it through an SRO. Now, on that topic, I'll just make one final point, and I have nothing else on the SRO, because I understand it. I, I don't think it's, it's smart necessarily long-term, and other people are better building contracts than I. But to, to say we'll pay 75,000, because, one, the cost can change over a long period of time. And so I, I, well, actually, I would not rather pay the 75%, because something could happen with that SRO. We could eliminate that position. There's many things that happen with SRO. I would rather do a set dollar amount towards the SRO, and that's the way I would rather do it. You could even index it for inflation if you wanted to, if your intent is covering the SRO. But I would not tie this to the SRO. You could talk about it as, this would help cover the cost of an SRO, but when you write up the legal work, I do not want this tied to an individual position that could be eliminated, and poof, the JED has no more purpose or, or in order with it, and have to do legal things to change it.
Just, just one more note to everyone. So basically, going back to the ORC 715.72, "One or more municipal corporations, one or more townships may enter into a contract pursuant, pursuant to which they designate one or more areas as a joint economic development district for the purpose of facilitating economic development and redevelopment, create and preserve jobs and employment opportunities." So an SRO has nothing to do with that, really, do you think? So that's why, as far as an SRO to, to make the JED worthwhile, doesn't seem to make any sense to me. And maybe the counselor can, can chime in on that.
I spoke for Mr. Richards earlier, and I just saw that he is on the call. So the question that was brought before, really, for Mr. Richards, was how, I guess, does the school feel about an SRO? Do you feel like an SRO is needed? And has that been brought before the Board of Education?
You cut out on me just as, as you're doing part of that. That may be my computer here at the home.
It was, has, do you feel that the school right now needs a resource officer, school resource officer, or do you feel that it will be needed once it goes out there? And has that been discussed with the Board of Education?
No. So I can answer the second question first, because, no, we haven't talked about it as a Board of Education, with the Board of Education, not opposed to doing that. It's an interesting word choice that you use, Mrs. Reed, when you say, do we need? I, I like to be very careful with that word choice. Uh, I, I like to be very careful with that word choice. Would I like to? Yeah, I, 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 I love having SRO. I, I think there's some very positive things, things that can come from it. So, um, so I, I'm, I'm a big fan of the SRO, uh, progress. I've championed those in previous districts that I've been in, uh, and I've gotten to work with some SROs, and, and they can, they can be really great resources for a school. The, the question of need, though, uh, I, I, I'm always very picky about that. Do we need one? I don't know if we need one. I, I, I think it would be safe to say, uh, we, we noticed this year, and you and German Township, I, I thank, thank you guys for being involved. When we had, uh, our, on election day, uh, at the high school, we had a, we had a very healthy turnout out at the high school, and, and you guys sent out somebody, uh, to help with some traffic flow there, uh, because we just had a, a, a massive turnout, which was fantastic. So I think there are times where, like, traffic flow and stuff like that, uh, I'm, I'm going to knock on some wood, and I'm saying this in twenty twenty, but we're, we're pretty blessed that we have some pretty good kids. So the, the phrase need, uh, I, I just want to be careful about that. Am I supportive of an SRO? Yeah. And do I think that an SRO could be a good thing? I, I think a good SRO could be a good thing in the best of schools that have very few discipline problems. So I'm, I'm supportive of it. I, I, I just would be very careful, uh, with, with the word need. I, I'm not sure if it's a need. Is it something that we'd like to have? I think I could probably speak for the board and say, yeah, we'd love to have an SRO. But we've also talked about a lot of things that we'd like to have. So that probably doesn't help you out a lot. Uh, Mrs. Reed, to your question, and I apologize for that. But I, I would say we're supportive of an SRO. Uh, we, we support a notion of an SRO. Uh, and I would say, even if the board, I can say, I personally, I don't know what the board would say, but I can say, I personally support the notion of SROs. Uh, I am not a fan of arming teachers. Uh, well, that's not what we're trained to do. I, I'm a bigger fan of people who are trained to do this, uh, do that, and that's law enforcement officers.
This is a, a personal question, not one that a citizen asked, but, and you might not know, but just a roundabout general idea, being the superintendent. How many calls are, do police respond to on, and, and including primary, intermediate, uh, the middle school and the high school?
Um, so, so calls, so one, I, we are blessed, and, and, and I know this is German Township, and, and I thank the German Township officers that come out to the high school. Jackson Township comes out to our junior high. German Town comes to our elementary. One, we are blessed that all of those officers, and, and I think this is a directive from their bosses, but whenever they have some downtime, they're almost always in our buildings, uh, which is, which is really a benefit to our district. It, it is a deterrent, and it, it provides an extra level of comfort for, I think, our parents, and I think for our kids and our staff. Uh, we don't have a ton of, of emergency calls, to my knowledge. I can, I can do some digging on that. Actually, you guys would probably be able to find out from German Township. Uh, we don't have a ton that go out to the junior high. Uh, part of that's because we only have two grades of kids there. I'm knocking on wood that we don't have many to a K six building. If we started having police having to make calls to a K six building, uh, we, we'd have, we'd have, I, my answer might change about an SRO, that that would be a need then. So we, we don't have a ton, uh, very honestly, and when we do have to make the call out, it's usually because we've caught a, it seems like the most common one that we've had of late is, uh, catching, catching kids with a vape, vape pen, and we test it, and that vape pen may have THC in it. And so the German Township, uh, officers assist us with that process. So it's nothing that they have to drop what they're doing and come out. I, so I, there's a difference between even calls, Mrs. Reed. So, for example, we call German Township for that, but that's not a drop what you're doing, you have to come here now. I'm going to guess, and I can do some digging here, and I can, if it's okay, is the chat feature enabled? I can try to find out an answer here and put it in the chat feature here in the next few minutes.
Yeah, that would be great. I think that would help the discussion of the, the need for, for the SRO.
The only thing that I will say is, SROs are also helpful. We, we do have drug testing, uh, for student athletes and kids that come to school. I know some people ask questions about that. Drug testing, you're never going to see any data, uh, to see if it's effective, because it's really meant to act as a deterrent. Um, and so I think the value of an SRO is, is really in that of, of a deterrence. So you're not going to see decreased behavioral numbers, decrease this. Hopefully, it's just a deterrent to stop it from happening in the first place. So, uh, but I will, I will try to get the answer for you. It may not be an exact answer, but I can probably get you a, a monthly ballpark for that, and I'll try to put that in the chat for you here in a minute.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Re, or Mr. Richards. But first, a quick comment, um, and, and kind of response to, um, Jake's conversation with Chief Anzig. Um, I've talked to Chief Shade and Jackson Township several times. He is on board with spending as much time at this, um, high school facility as they do at the middle school currently, once, once that school relocates. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that. That's something I brought up at the last, um, discussion. It's something that I will continue to bring up. Jackson Township will not spend any less time at the schools that they do now. An important thing to note.
And Chief Shade is a great partner for us. So, Mr. Lamb, we appreciate everything that Chief Shade does. He is, we, we, we are truly blessed with a, a small district that we have three police jurisdictions that all are, are very focused on our schools, and we're so appreciative of that.
Yeah, we're, we're big fans of Chief Shade, too. So the question I have for you, uh, the discussion basically has been, what will the JED's contribution be to the, to the, what will the municipality's contribution be to the JED? Uh, Mr. Stubbs, uh, presented one option, that would be the, um, SRO. But we know that the, um, JED doesn't really spell out what that requirement needs to be. It just needs to be a contribution that does not exist currently today. So I was wondering, I mean, this, this jet has been in discussion for a long time, well before we even had formal discussions about it. I was just wondering if you, school board, just you, you and teachers, have had any just conversations, not necessarily expectations, but even ideas as to what, um, the JED might be, be able to contribute? And, and that would, like, benefit to the school?
So oddly enough, and, and I apologize, I'm going to have to get going. I have, I have another meeting here, all, all online at seven o'clock. Uh, oddly enough, that meeting is about an education, excuse me, an education foundation that we're looking to start. So maybe I can answer it this way, Mr. Lamb. No, we haven't talked about it at a board level. But we've been looking to start an education foundation about things that we'd like to have. Schools wouldn't necessarily, uh, be able to pay for out of a general budget. Uh, one of the things that we've talked about as of late would be to have a, I'm going to use this as a very, very broad term, is an outdoor classroom, where we can also talk about, uh, like an outdoor, and, and I could even send you a picture of an, uh, an outdoor kind of theater, kind of area, uh, that some people have had. If you wanted to look someplace, um, Prell County, their historical society, uh, they have, they have something like this. I can send you a picture. It, it sounds really fancy when I say outdoor theater. If I show you the picture, you would see it's, it's nothing fancy. But basically, some outdoor learning spaces for our kids. I, I think that would be something that, that could be beneficial for our kids during a school day, but could also be beneficial for communities, uh, after the school day. Uh, I know the one, I was talking to, uh, our, one of our new state representatives, Mr. Creach. And he, he was saying that they have at that, during Fourth of July, and they do outdoor educational things. I, I think something like that would be, would be really kind of incredible. Uh, I don't know what type of cost there is for that. Uh, but we've also talked about, we have one, I'm going to brag just for a second. Uh, we have one of the top ten FFA programs in the United States. Uh, we were just awarded that about a month ago. It would make sense to me that maybe we have some sort of community garden, uh, where maybe some people can come, and we can actually grow some food that we use in our own cafeteria. And I know the camp program up in Farmersville, that maybe we can donate some unused food up to those in need. I think ideas like that would be, would be kind of neat, uh, but more outdoors. I think what we've seen during COVID is, the more things that we can do outdoors, the better. But those would be just, some, those are my thoughts. I will say, I've talked to one or two board members about that, but we've not had any official discussion about it. I don't know if that's what you were looking for, Mr. Lamb.
That's exactly what I'm looking for. Some of the feedback I've received in, in Farmersville, and, you know, following up from the previous meeting, um, you know, we all went back to our respective municipalities and just got feedback from council members, and, you know, we did from the community as well. And, um, I, I just, just to put it out on the table, I got a lot of feedback, especially from council, that, um, Farmersville doesn't really like the idea of the JED supporting an SRO. Just because, you know, they think that should be a, a school-type purchase, and also that some of the points that, you know, Tyler's made is that, you know, it's not something that's guaranteed forever. It's something that you may change your mind. Who knows? A state may even provide one someday. You, you just never know how that will change. But, um, the feedback was, and it was, those are great ideas. Why don't we ask the school, what would be of benefit to them, because they're the only property on this, in this JED, JED location? So that's why I wanted to ask you, those are great ideas. Um, I appreciate that feedback. Um, I don't know if that's going to go anywhere. I don't know if that, uh, you know, if any other municipalities are even interested in, in making a contribution like that through the JED. But, um, I did want to hear some more ideas, so thank you.
All right, I'm going to jump in there real quick, because I, I think that was a really good idea, Mr. Liam, to ask him those questions. Um, I think it opens the door for, for other things, like Mr. Reamer's brought up, that, you know, that SRO could go away, and we are narrowing our scope. I'm not sure, luckily, the attorney is on here. I'm just throwing this idea out. If, instead of saying it went for the SRO, um, because it's, we're hearing things like, we don't, not very many calls a month, and it's great that, to have someone in the building for presence, um, to deter. But is that a need? We're not sure of the need necessarily. I don't think that there's an officer that sits out there all the time at basketball games now, so I'm not sure why that would need to be something that is there all the time. So there is an officer that sits at the basketball game every Friday and every Saturday, or whatever, whatever it is. So that wouldn't be any additional cost, because we're already doing that currently. Since the high school's already out there, and that's where the games are at. So instead of saying it's for an SRO, if we made a fund, because there has to be a JED board once this is, um, set up, if it is set up, instead of saying that, making a fund to say this could be spent on items for the school, and then the JED board would then decide if that went to the SRO or to different things like outdoor classrooms. This year, obviously, is a challenge for everybody. It would, it kind of would have been nice to have a fund to say, you know, this year, we're going to fund an outdoor classroom or, or what have you. Instead of it saying it has to go for an SRO, because maybe I, I feel that the school should have to pick up the bill for a lot of it. Sorry, Mr. Richards. Because it would be solely for the school, essentially, that they should have to pick up a lot of it, and even maybe benefits and everything, because they're for the school. So that, that's just my thought. I don't know if it's something that really is possible for us to do, instead of saying it's for the SRO, saying it has to go towards the school and the board. The JED board then gets to decide. I don't know how that works.
So this is Brenda. It's, it, it's probably possible to structure something. It's going to be a little more complicated because, you know, saying that the JED will pay for a certain amount of an SRO salary for a certain number of years is a little easier to, you know, draft and put into a document. Everybody looked at it later, and they know what it means. To say that the JED itself, um, off the top, is going to contribute a certain amount towards, you know, school capital improvements or projects. You're potentially talking about something a little more open-ended to, you could say, you know, the JED board will make a contribution of a certain amount of money or a certain percentage of money to this new, you know, school foundation, if they create, you know, um, this foundation. And then the school board in that case would, or the foundation board would then decide what those monies are spent on, on a yearly basis. So there will be ways to, to kind of incorporate these suggestions. It may get a little wordy in the document. We may open ourselves up to people in the future having to make decisions and interpretations along the way as it goes, but that all depends on what's ultimately decided. And, you know, depending on how it's structured, if it's, you know, upfront money from the communities may or may not count as your contribution. If it's coming directly from the board, the JED, you know, before revenues are distributed, then there'll still be a, a need for the, the initial contribution towards the JED to create the JED, but you could still write in that the JED has to send some of the money towards school projects.
Ms. Whammer, this is Jake Stubbs, German Township. I have a question for you. If, if we were to fund an SRO at whatever percentage it may be, and the school decides ten years from now they don't want one, uh, but it's already written in the agreement, what, what, uh, mechanisms are there at that point to be able to change and adjust down the road?
Right. So we would probably want to put, you know, language in that says, you know, the JED would provide seventy five percent of the cost of an SRO for, you know, whatever period of time we decide on, five years, ten years, the life of the JED. For until the school determines they don't, don't want this anymore. Because it's not as if they're a party to the JED per se. So you really don't want the JED in a position of forcing something on another entity that they don't want. So it's going to have to have some provision in there that says, you know, as long as needed, as long as requested by the school, so that if and when the school doesn't want that anymore, or as was, you know, um, mentioned, if the state starts paying for SROs, then, you know, you don't really want to pay for something that the state is going to willingly pay for. So you would put in some provisions that would make it, that the school would have to request it on a yearly basis or consent to it. So then at such time as they decide they no longer want it, you can't forfeit on them. And you wouldn't want to leave it rigid such that you'd have to amend the document and go through that whole process to take that out. So you would write in some language to deal with that circumstance when you wrote the document.
Thank you. That, that's what I was wondering, if, if we had to go through the entire process again, if down the road at some point, a decision was made that that was no longer needed. So thank you.
So, yeah, I, I'm just trying to get at my thoughts, because this is, this is going to be my, hopefully, most impactful and last real, uh, statement on this topic. You know, when I, when I was leading the levy, distributing the levy campaign, my, my perspective at the point in time was, this will not bankrupt any entity, and, uh, it's something that, uh, is not, shouldn't get wrapped up with the school, and it should be up to the, the municipalities and, and townships if they think that this is really that important. I sit here now on the other side, and I say, I, I don't know that the juice is worth the squeeze. I mean, there's a couple of things I'll first kick off with, with, I came in here fully to that point tonight, where I didn't see that there was a need for this, for all of the legal ramifications and some of the other things I'll get to in a moment. But then, Mr. Stubbs, you did throw me off a bit, because when you, when you said we're going to incur this no matter what for the township, my responsibility today is to represent the township. my responsibility today is to represent the township. And if we're going to incur significant expenses as, as you show here, um, it makes me want to put a JED in place to cover those expenses. Okay. But, uh, knowing that, uh, you know, what they said about Chief Shade going out there and doing this, that we're already servicing the, the high school basketball games, um, I have a hard time believing that we'll truly, when it gets down to brass tacks, truly incur the full incremental person, you know, at all times for the school, at least during the summer month, or not during the summer months and stuff. So uh, I know that our police budget is tight today. You, you know, the police budget is tight and, uh, um, I don't think we could, we could, uh, hire another officer, but could we find a way to, to cover this, uh, responsibility? Um, without adding another officer? That's where I stand today. If you were to say not, I would push probably a little bit harder for the JED, but then it still brings me back to the point of juice worth the squeeze. Um, I, I'm a CPA. I did income taxes for five years for a public accounting firm. And it's no small task to administer an income tax, uh, uh, plan. And, and so I struggle a little bit, you know, we, I'd sent some questions to, to Brenda, you know, after our first meeting and, and she got back to me and I, I just keep stewing over them and it's you gotta form a board for the JED. You've got insurance policies for the JED every year. You've got the, the, the legal fees to establish this. You're opening yourselves up as, uh, townships and municipalities to, um, all kinds of, of legality, uh, issues when you, when you try to administer taxes on, uh, businesses that, uh, and, and I know Brenda, you had said, you know, they need to register and they must pay. Well, that's the law, but at the end of the day, if, if a business doesn't say that they had 10 employees on the school site working that day, it's up to the JED to prove that they did have those employees there. And, uh, I just know that there's a lot to administer and collect those taxes. Uh, we need to find probably like a Rita or, um, I can't remember what the Cleveland one is, like a CCI or whatever it is that does it for Germantown to, to administer this for us. What's the, what's the cut that they're taking out of this? Um, the going benefit of it i- is relatively limited. And then when you get down to, and I give Mr. Stubbs credit for this piece of it, on, on the taxation piece. At the end of the day, when we talk about giving money back to, to give a reason for the JED to the school district, and we're talking about, let's, let's take fifteen thousand dollars, what we decide to set aside for, for the JED, for, uh, um, the school district's uses, whatever they see fit or whatever. At the end of the day, what you're doing is you're telling the teachers, we're taking money out of your paycheck and giving it to the Board of Education to determine what they see fit, um, to do with that money. And at the end of the day, the reason I see putting a JED in place is a couple of things. Number one, first and foremost is to cover any incremental expenses that the township will, will incur while servicing the JED district. And, and, and that's number one. Uh, so that's not passing the money back to the school. And I know that's the, how you have to get a JED established, but um, there's my number one problem. Number two is, is it is to somewhat make whole some of the tax loss that we had and people are already being taxed as they were. I think I understand completely that people are already being taxed in Germantown and Farmersville. And so continuing that tax is not incremental to them for the most part, and it's keeping more tax off of our citizens. So that's where I completely entertain this and also entertain splitting this for what's best for our entire Valley View District, which is where we live and the communities we work in, in living. So I understood from that perspective, but when we can't come to an agreement and we sit here and talk about what the actual dollar amount is and then the headaches, the legalities, the long-term maintenance, the forming of another board to administer this and, and, and maintain it long-term. Um, I, I just struggle with it. And so I, I'm in a place where, um, I'm still open and I'll listen to, um, reason at all time and always, but uh, someone's going to have to explain to me how much money they really think we're going to get out of this. And I'm not talking about some pie in the sky numbers from, uh, the construction. It's got to be a little bit more reasonable, like talking to some other school districts and seeing what, what actually qualified as wages that people reported in those districts, because a lot of times I've seen it firsthand. People do not report the wages where they actually work them on construction jobs like they should. And you don't always collect all of those revenues that we estimate today. And so, uh, I, I struggle to understand how we're going to get all that money collected and that it's going to be enough benefit and then passing money back to the JED for them to do whatever they see fit, I feel like is a slap in the face to the teachers on that piece of it. Um, so the SRO is a little bit more understandable. We're providing something to the, the, uh, JED district that makes sense that may be needed. Uh, but again, back to how long will they need that? And do they really need it to Mr. Richards' point?
Brenda, if you could, I, I know we've talked about this multiple times, but I think we're, we're talking two things, right? We're talking about first of all, our contribution, which we've all talked about contributing towards the legal fees to set this up. The second piece of this is what is the purpose? And I know you've walked us through what the, what the law says as far as what are the legal purposes for starting a JED? Can you cover that again? And, um, I mean, I, I think first and foremost, when I look at this, obviously it's an economic development district, right? At some point in the future, there could be development on that land. We'll have water, sewer, electric, everything there, and they've got plenty of land to do additional development. Um, that's the clearest purpose for me. Um, as far as incremental costs, it sounds like Mr. Cross maybe heard different information. Did he say he talked to Chief Anzic? Was that who?
Yeah, I, I talked to Chief Anzic.
You can, we'll address the second piece. You, you got the second piece. I, I want to address that, but I, I, I think what I would think of when I think of the JED is like a Austin Landing, for instance. So in, in, I a hundred percent agree. I would hope at some point, and I don't know if Starbucks, I'm being facetious here to some degree, but they put something next to the high school, you know, they, they, they do develop that. That's fine. I have no issues. But I think the point is when you look at like a JED, like at Austin Landing or in Clayton Township where a JED exists, you've got the townships coming in and they're putting road and water and sewer and doing things of that nature. Yeah. Those, if that was the piece, I would say absolutely, like the township is going to be incurring something in our road and bridge department that we absolutely need money for, and we're going to give them back something that they need to be able to exist there. When we start talking about amphitheaters, that's not something they need to exist there. And, and and, and so that's where I struggle is like, I, I a hundred percent understand purposes of JEDs and why they exist. And I could see where we might have some development there. And maybe in the future, we might need to sit down and say, listen, they're, they're talking about needing a road and we might have a real purpose of why we need to put some money into it. I think when we're all sitting around the table and say, well, we don't know what to contribute. We don't know what we really need to give them. I think that brings me back to my chair here as a township trustee to say, I don't see where I'm going to absolutely incur substantial amount of dollars. I have no purpose to go collect more taxes and, and, and do something in that case. And so that's, that's the piece I struggle. I totally understand, uh, Brian, what you're talking about JEDs. I understand the purpose of them. I understand that we might have that purpose at some point. I just, I'm struggling to see that today. And I, I'm willing to discuss it, but you see what I'm saying? We're not, we're not creating a road. We're not, we're not running water. Um, you know, sewer lines and all these other things out there. So, so I'm struggling a little bit with that.
We also said, uh, we've talked about it before, but the intersection of two county roads. So we're not responsible directly for those roads. And you can say there's going to be additional traffic. Potentially, I think that's minimal because people are going wherever they're going anyway. Um, so whether they're, uh, however they get there, I mean, I, I don't see that as a big impact. So I agree with you a hundred percent because typical JEDs, you have sidewalks, you have landscaping, you have streetlights, side, uh, I mean, there's, there's whole, a whole lot of host of things that you have, like Austin Landing, which is set up crazy, by the way. But that's a whole different, that's a whole different conversation. But, but there's, there's a purpose that that JED has to benefit the JED and, and that purpose. I, and that's why I've struggled with this for, for several months and, and this has been going on and on and on. Um, it's, it's hard to get numbers. I, I'm not sure we've ever gotten real numbers um, of loss from the city of Germantown or Farmersville. We've gotten estimates. We've never gotten hard numbers. And then today, Brian, you said, well, we, we may be off fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. Well, if we would have passed this in March without the questions that have come up, you know, in, in that time, I mean, that, that's a significant portion of money that those questions wouldn't have been brought up had it not been for the discussions that we've had. So, um, that's the issue I struggle with for JED, for the purpose of a JED. We don't have that. And, and we, Brian, we may, you're right. There could be extra development out there, but if there is, there's going to have to be a lot of zoning changes. It's not just a flat out here, we're putting a Taco Bell in. I mean, that's, that, that, there's going to be a whole lot of work that would ever have to go into that ever being a possibility. So that's why I struggle with it now. That's why I suggested short-term construction-only JED. And then five years from now, if there's a plan where we need, you know, if, if we're doing something else down the road, you have the option to keep what, take what was in place and build on it in, in the future. But I don't like taxing school employees. And yes, I'm one of them, but that's not the purpose of my objection. The purpose of my objection is there is no benefit to the school employees themselves. Um, and, and we've gone around and around and around about this, I know, but that's where, that's where I struggle. That's where I've come from this entire time. And, and I, I mean, I, I, I agree with what you just said with the purpose, I believe.
And, and I, I do understand that. I think you would agree though, that the, the teachers, the employees are being taxed today in Farmersville and Germantown. And so, you know, when they moved out to the school, it's like you're keeping that same person paying taxes, right? And, and so that's where my balance has always been. Do we want to potentially incur more expense in the township and have to raise taxes some other way or cut benefits really, because we have no income tax way, but cut benefits to our, our citizens? Or do we want to keep that same tax base that is being taxed today? And put them into a different tax base and then make everybody more whole off of the same people, right? And so I, I do understand where you're coming from, but I think we can all at least sympathize with that situation that at least to me, it makes sense when you already have people paying taxes, you keep them paying taxes, just sliding them over to doing the same jobs, doing the same things. And then you keep the same level of services across the board for the entire community. And so that's where I was willing and still willing to have the discussion and, and even fight to some degree to, to be amicable and, and do what's best for the community. But I guess at the end of the day, I still circle back to the where, where can we justify and is the juice worth the squeeze? I think, uh, to Mr. Stubbs' point, I'm still willing to have a debate and this really feels like talking out of my side of my mouth on a 10-year. I think the five years too short sighted. I think it's not worth setting up. It's not worth establishing, doing the legal work and, and, and creating all that. And I also am skeptical, as you've heard me talk about the construction revenue coming out of this. I feel like I'm not so sure about that. I've seen how some of these things play out. Now, what I am sure about is when the school teachers and the employees are sitting in that district, they will be getting withheld on their, on their paychecks every week and month, and that tax dollars are real. And for five years to, to let them transition in there, us to contribute some of that money for maybe unforeseen things that the school might not have money for from finishing the building project and inflation and things, maybe setting aside some money where they can actually use that to finish up any things that are last for the teachers. It helps them all, helps everybody, you know, the, the students and everybody. It helps when we split some of this revenue, give them more time in Germantown and Farmersville to wind down, uh, the services that maybe they were providing that they're going to have to now cut. Uh, if, if they are truly losing revenues, it gives them an ability to, to lengthen that runway. And it gives us an opportunity for the next 10 years to maybe set aside and build some bolsters in case we actually do incur things out of the school district to where we can cover those expenses for a long period of time. So I, I think a 10-year one makes a lot of sense still to some degree, but I'm, I'm, if I was not going to go with a 10-year, I'd probably go with nothing. That's probably where I'm at.
How do we feel about lowering the percentage? Because one of the issues I have is we represent Germantownship, but we also represent the people in Germantown. They vote for us. We represent them too. You, we've got somewhere around 25% of the school employees that live in the city of Germantown. They're going to incur not just the JED tax, but because of the income tax credit, they're going to be paying significantly, they're going to be paying more. More than they do now above and beyond the JED. If we go 1%, they're not paying more than they are now. So, um, I mean, that's my issue too, is you're, you're increasing the taxes of the people that live in Germantown um, with the income tax credit. Um, you're taxing people who work at the high school now that aren't necessarily paying it if they live in a township, whatever township that may be. So um, are we, are we willing to consider a lower, uh, the lower 1% percentage? And then maybe if we did that, if we administered at Farmersville's rate, have Farmersville administer it, pay Farmersville to administer it, and then they could bring in extra revenue that way as well.
I, I think we'll, we'll hold there and let, uh, Mr. Lamb chime in. If you want to talk about administration, if you think that's even possible, or Brenda on that piece, because I, I think that's a reasonable one and then we can talk the rest of it. Because administration to me i- is important to, to figure out. I, I, I don't, I've never understood fully where we, how we administer this.
Yeah, I agree. Administration, I think, is an important thing to figure out, but I, I just know from the limited amount of taxpayers we have in Farmersville, limited, limited amount of residents we have in Farmersville. It's, it's not that time-consuming to take care of that many, um, that, that much tax income, uh, and, and, and you know, to be far fewer employees in this JED district. So I don't think it'll be much to take care of. I think deciding who takes care of it is is an important piece. Um, I think we would be open to keeping it in-house, meaning the Valley View community. Um, Farmersville does have a tax administrator. It's really difficult for me to have this conversation right now because our, um, tax administrator is actually retiring in April. So it's a position that I am currently, um, you know, we're, we're currently looking to replace. So, um, but I, I think, um, I think that's definitely doable. That's a conversation, um, I could have with council and I would think, um, that they would be completely on board with that. We're already doing it. We're already doing it for our residents. We wouldn't be taking on that many additional people. So I don't see, I don't see why it would be a problem.
If it's, oh, sorry. If it's going to go through, I'd just like to see the tax dollars stay in, in our community and not be shipped to Cleveland. For sure. So if, if Farmersville could do it, I think that was, would be better. Keep the money here. I, yeah. So that's just where I'm at.
And, and I guess Brian, I'd ask you for your experience, if you even know, I, I know it's probably something outside your purview, but I mean, a Rita or a CCI or something like that, I would have to imagine there's some kind of flat rate that even to your point, you know, Mr. Lamb, it, it's not as though an extra 50 returns is going to be overwhelming, but they probably have a minimum four of, we don't do anything for less than five, 10, 15,000 or something like that. And then you're talking about eating into a, a chunk of our collection.
So, uh, we haven't had the specific conversation with CCA. When we signed up for them, it was a straight, they said their fee fluctuates between a half a percent and 2%. Yeah, of total collection. So theoretically, if they're on the half a percent range, I mean, they could collect this for a thousand bucks, 2,000. Now, that assumes they don't have a minimum, like you said. Now, I don't know. So we, we can, uh, definitely reach out to them if we want to just get a I, I would hate for Farmersville to go hire somebody at forty thousand dollars a year if they could do it for a thousand, but maybe they can. I have no idea. You know, and I think we wouldn't have to hire anybody either. I think the point would be that we would do this within our current, um, you know, personnel structure. We, we would not add somebody to take on additional like 50 to 80 returns. That just wouldn't be necessary. Uh, we're, we are going to replace that position. We're not outsourcing that role because that, that person does so many other things too. It's just one of the roles of the job. So I didn't mean to lead on that we won't have that spot unless we have, uh, you know, unless we had the need for this, but um, yeah, that's a position that'll be replaced. I, I just meant it's hard for me to talk about now just because of the uncertainty associated with the situation right now.
I believe it's Mr. Cross, if you want to make your comment now.
Yeah, sure. Um, so, so by the ORC, one of the municipal, municipalities in the JED has to handle the collection and the distribution of the income tax. So it would have to be either Farmersville or Germantown. Um, to, to get back to a couple of things, again, uh, really Germantownship shouldn't incur any, any expense for the JED again, because Manning Road and Germantown Farmersville Pike are maintained by the county. So even in the future, there shouldn't be anything as far as we, you know, Germantownship is, is going to incur along to, to Tyler's point there. So, uh, I just want to make a comment. I had, I had reached out to Mr. Lamb a couple of weeks ago to get some information. I really thank him. He got, got that back very, very quickly. Um, I, and I, I, I may be a, a little bit, uh, you know, we, you've sat here for, you know, five, five plus hours. I think that the, the entities here need to get back to square one, maybe. You know, what is each entity going to contribute to, to, to the JED to see if it can go forward? And then there's got to be some numbers. No one has, you know, what's, what's the estimated income that's going to be coming from the JED? What income is Germantown losing? What income is Farmersville losing? So you have something to deal with. Right now it's just, you're, you're just, there, there's no, no concrete figures to, to present to the public to let them know how this will, will be handled. How the percentages will be handled either. So, um, to let them know how this will, will be handled, how the percentages will be handled either. So, um, I think it, it seems like it's more of a spinning your wheels versus getting some of the basics out of the way. And that's kind of what Counselor, uh, Wamer was talking about last time as far as maybe get some, some representatives and get some of this ironed out. So you can present it to the public and see what, you know, or, or not. Just, just like, you know, uh, Mr. Rembert says, is this necessary? So, so that's, that's all I have.
I appreciate that. I'll try to address some of those things too. I think we do have more than probably everyone's heard is one, on, on the road piece first, I, I think you're a hundred percent right, Mr. Cross. Those two roads are county roads, but I've heard a lot about all the, all the traffic coming from the south, from the intermediate and elementary now is going to come up through Weaver Road. Weaver is a township road. Uh, you know, that's not a good intersection already. So there, there's other things. I think we don't have to sit here and debate individual circumstances. I just want to say that there's things that could be unforeseen that we may incur as expenses. Again, I'm in agreement. I don't think it's overwhelming at this point. I think there's just things we need to think about and make sure that we didn't feel like we're going to incur them. I think we are getting to a place where we all have a framework of could we do this and could we make it work? And I think we are getting there. And unfortunately, I, I agree, it's taken a little bit of time, but I think we are getting to the right place where we could make something work. So I don't feel like it's completely spinning the wheels. I think on the estimate, back to your point on that, what, what, what we have on paper as estimated and it has been, has been worked up is, is roughly $500,000 of revenue that could be collected at a one and a half percent rate. Through the construction period to five-year construction period. And so if we went to 1%, I mean, my rough math says you cut that by a third. So you're going down to somewhere in that $300,000 range of revenue during the construction phase. The teacher salaries, I, I can't recall, but just a spitballing here, would you say there was roughly a hundred teachers and employees or something like that that would be on that campus? At, at the end of the day, I generally remember some salary numbers from when I did the work on the school stuff and let's just call it $5 million. And I think that's a slight underestimate. If you put 1% of a $5 million, somebody want to do the quick math on that? Is it 50 or, yeah, $50,000? Does that sound correct? And on a going basis? Well, then the salaries, I might be underestimating, so I think it's 50,000. 200, okay.
The payroll estimate for the primary school, the junior high school combined.
$50,000 apiece. Just rough math here, that's $10 million. Okay. So that's double what I thought. So I was thinking 5 millionish. So if you say $10 million times a 1% income tax rate, that's $100,000 a year. So, um, and that's double of 50, I thought, because I thought there was a little bit less salaries and wages. So again, confirmed salaries and wages were pretty close, somewhere between 50 and 100,000 on a going basis could be collected from a JED at a 1% rate. This is back to the juice worth the squeeze piece. I think the ongoing costs we're talking about are definitely less than $10,000 a year. But you have some insurance policies for the board members on the JED. Uh, you have some, uh, um, administration fees on the collection, which, you know, with Mr. Lamb, we could work that out. And that might be part of their split or something along those lines. We can figure that out. But at the end of the day, I think those are the numbers. I think they are relatively close in the ballpark of what we're talking about. The question I have is will we really get a half a million out of the construction phase? I don't know about that. But let's say we get 250 out of construction phase and then you get, uh, somewhere around $75,000 a year, probably more like $50,000 a year net. Could be upwards of that, but I don't think any of us should sit in this room and bank on more than $50,000 net out of a 1% income tax on the JED. So now I think we have some reasonable numbers. I, I personally, again, I'm back to, um, based on what's best for our entire community and what's best for the Germantown residents, I'm okay with doing a 10-year JED. It gives us all longevity to understand and get to the place of the schools being built and understand what we're incurring and still having an operating JED that we could amend or change at that point in time. Rather than doing a five-year construction only, it really might not be worth the juice of the squeeze. And not even getting to the finished final state, knowing what the going cost and basis is. That gives you guys a period of time. It gives Farmersville a period of time to, uh, you know, adjust services or whatever is necessary to, uh, um, compensate for what they're going to lose, whatever that may be. And at, at this point, to be honest, I really don't care what that is. Because to, to Jake's point and to the legal rulings, that's not the purpose of the JED. It's not to, to make you guys whole forever. So as long as we can help, uh, alleviate it for 10 years and maybe you guys can bank some of that and make it longer. So that's where I sit today. I, I understand generally what the numbers look like. I definitely agree that it makes sense to go back to the original document from March. Maybe tighten some of these numbers up with, with the, with the lawyers and whoever we need to work with. And then I, I think tonight, the last piece of this is two things. One, seeing if everybody's on board with that proposal and, and then start talking split and kind of nailing out some numbers. And then I think we could put this in front of the public in a, in a short period of time, Mr. Cross.
I'm definitely much more comfortable with the 10-year short, shorter term JED. Um, one thing we talked about too, uh, there, there's potential for development, potentially at the high school. Well, at the same time, whatever Valley View does with those buildings, there's also potential for development there, which would bring in income to the city of Germantown that they could replace what they're, they're lose, losing now. So I think it's open-ended too. I mean, it's not just a flat number. We're losing X amount of dollars. There's mechanisms in place to bring that back for the two, the village and the city. As well as new developments in the city of Germantown and, and Farmersville as well. So, I mean, it's not just, I don't see it as a straight up loss. It is, uh, there's also loss of services provided too. So, um, you know, it's, I, I don't see the straight loss. So I, I'm definitely, if we're talking 1% and 10-year, I'm on board with that. I'm, I feel like I'm, that's something I can get behind.
So I would love to save that, the historic building there in town. I have a fear of what that would cost and whether anyone would ever want it, but it's just, it's too nice when you're standing there at the bottom of Plum Street, looking up the hill and you see that old building right there. Yeah.
So you know what bothers me since we're, we're, we're having a good meeting? The, well, that doesn't bother me. When you look up, when you look at the street. So if you're, if you're coming down the road and you're going, you can either go up to the school or you can go down the pipe. That yellow line is not in line with the flagpole. And for whatever reason, that just, every time I go that way, just like, ah.
Well, uh, just to pipe this in, I think Mr. Richards, he dropped off, but I'm pretty sure he would sell that for about $5 if there's someone willing to take care of that building. So I'm, I'm advertising to anyone that might be listening out there. It's a good place for a brewery in towns.
And you know what? Oh, that sounds true. Uh, the city of Eaton, when they built their new schools, the building downtown, I think it was the old middle school or high school is now senior living. So the city of Eaton didn't take a loss when that school moved. I think, I don't know if it's in the, it's pretty far out. So I don't know if it's in the township or in the city limits there. But when it moved out, they, they were able to bring business right back in. And I'm sure they didn't replace all the revenue, but they definitely replaced some of it. So that's something that hasn't been discussed along the way either.
So, so my other comment, I've been pushing for a longer JED only because I don't want to go through this again, but one thing I would recommend, even if we did do a 10-year, is to add a few options on there. If things are going well and we don't want to go through the entire public hearing and, and economic normal plan and, and this whole process again, we don't have to. So we can exercise the option. If, if it's not working, if nobody likes it, I think it would take a majority of whatever, whoever was on that JED board at the time, then we, we don't renew it and we start over. But if we were to go for something shorter term, um, again, my, my push I think was 25 years, but if you go 10-year, I could probably do it as long as we've got some options there to, to extend it. And I'm only one person again. So, you know, that's, I don't know what the rest of council is going to say.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Rossick? And I'm sure I have it in my notes somewhere. But as far as people that are on the JED board, it is, it corrects me when I mess this up. It is someone, it is not one of the trustees. It is someone appointed from, is it every entity or is it someone appointed from the school? I just, sorry.
It's Brenda. So the JED.
So the townships, I, I believe they're set up as German Township would have a representative for a two-year term. And then Jackson Township would have that same representative for the next two-year term. So the two townships would switch back and forth. If I.
Yeah, it's at the bottom of the, the three last questions thing we did back in.
Okay.
So it's one member representing the townships, one representing the municipalities, one representing the business. So it would be school board or their designee. And then one representing the employees. So, uh, school employee. And then one member kind of at large selected by others. Yeah. I think it was two years. Uh, it, it may be, we may be able to put it wherever we want. I don't know.
The, the term lengths are set in the statute. So you have to follow the statute for those board members, but you're right. There's one representative on the board for all of the townships. So we set up the draft document for that to be a, a rotating position. The first time this, you know, Jackson Township would appoint then German Township. Similar for the municipalities. There's one person on the board for the municipalities. Uh, and so they would alternate appointing that person. Who could be an elected official, but is not usually because of the, the issues. They usually appoint a staff member from the area. And then the school would have, uh, the school board would have a representative as would the employees. So the, the school employees would have a rep. And then those four pick the fifth rep.
Yes, Mr. Cross.
Thanks, Mrs. Reed. Hey, I have a question, question for the attorney. Because I was, I, I wasn't sure. So, uh, Mr. Woff is, is saying you could set this up for a certain period of time, but then at that end of that period, you could actually have it renewed? Is that correct or is that legal? Or you'd have to.
So most JEDs, uh, have an initial term. And then most of them provide for renewal options of significantly shorter terms. So most JEDs start out with a 30 to, yeah, I've seen 99, which seems really absurd. But 30 to 90-year, uh, 99-year initial term. And then they frequently have renewal terms for additional 10 to 30-year terms depending on, uh, what their initial terms were. And in most cases, the renewal is automatic unless one party provides notice, you know, six months before the expiration of the JED that they don't want to be party to the JED anymore. In this case, if you're looking at, you know, wanting a 10-year and only wanting it to extend in, you know, the rarer circumstances as opposed to automatically extending, you could put language in that says, you know, you have renewal options, but all parties to the contract must agree to the renewal rather than having it automatically renew unless somebody objects. You could actually require that with, uh, within, before six months before the expiration of the first 10-year period in order for the renewal provision to take effect, all parties would have to consent to that.
Thank you very much. Um, also, so i- if that's the case, you could go with a five-year JED. You would get all the construction money. You would have a couple of years of just the teacher's salaries, uh, funding it. And at that time, it may be that Germantown has more development right now. They've got the, uh, the development on, on Dayton Germantown Pike where you got $400,000 houses. So they're going to be getting a lot of income from that. Plus Triangle Station, you've still got some building there. So I, I know you probably don't agree with that, Brian, but, uh, it, it may be that Germantown may not need this, this JED after five years. And that by doing a five years of short term, you, you can decide at the end of that term, whether you want to, to go another five years. Since there is no big process in the whole thing. Thank you.
I guess fair input. I, I think again, I'm back to my point of the juice is not worth the squeeze on that. I, I'm not so sure how, how quickly the school will be built, um, especially with coronavirus and everything else, how quickly they'll get the construction done. I don't know how, how much of a going basis we'll get to see out of the school. I think to me, minimum's 10 years, uh, to, to go through this effort and work. And obviously we're sitting here today and have for, as you pointed out, five, five hours at least. And probably have at least another five hours in front of us to put that onus back on someone in five years when they haven't had an ability to see how this is run with the school in the district for at least a two to three-year period, I think is, is not the right move and short sighted. So I, I, I'm holding firm at at least 10. Um, I think 10 is, is a good number. I think to Brenda's point, we can put something in there on potential renewals for 10-year periods. I think that all sounds logical, sounds nice and round, and I like it round numbers. So I'm holding it 10.
Just to add, that's how our trash billing is. So when we did our last contract with Rumkey and we're in with Jackson and, uh, Farmersville and someone else, um, Perry Township, uh, the contract was set for three years with two, or five years with two, three-year extensions built into it. Um, that you could approve or disapprove at the time. So I don't know if that's something to have in place, uh, down the road, but that's how, that's how our trash, our, our trash Rumkey contract is set up.
Yeah, I think that's a lot easier to negotiate than what we're looking at, right? So a- as we've shown, so a- again, I, I think the 10 is, is reasonable. Hopefully it meets everyone's need.
David Cross, just to clarify, that head shaking wasn't directed at you. That was, I'm somewhat skeptical of that development, uh, at the moment. I fully hope they are successful there on Dayton Pike. I hope they build those homes. Um, and I wish them the best, but.
Yeah, no problem. There are some expensive homes being proposed. Yeah.
I, I guess I would ask, uh, Mr. Moyer, I, I see he's joined, um, and it's fair. If Mr. Moyer, if you wanted to first, you're not representing Jackson Township, but, um, i- if you have any contribution or thoughts, uh, and, and I understand, uh, you're not integral to the, to the JED, but I think everyone has always wanted to include Jackson Township. So I guess just ask for a little perspective from you and, and as a representative of Jackson Township, not just personally, but maybe what Jackson Township thinks about it.
Uh, Jackson Township, we've talked, we were in favor of a five-year construction, but I don't think we would have a problem extending that out to a 10-year.
Thank you for that. I, I guess in, in the purpose of moving forward to everyone, uh, are we willing to take a vote on at least that and kind of settle that? Then we can nail down the, the percentage of, of income tax. And then the third piece is split. I think those are the three key things. Is that fair?
Yeah, I just want to make sure. So, um, comment, I guess, I five-year, like, like you spoke before, Mr. Amer, seemed a little short for me. Five years comes up on you pretty quickly. You learn when you have children, they turn five so fast. But 10-years seems much more amicable for me. Uh, so I'm comfortable with the 10-year with the option hopefully to extend it if, um, it all is going well and, and all of that. My question about the percentage, so we, you, you asked for the, we want to know if you're okay with the 10-year first before we discuss whether the 1% or the one and a half.
In, in the, uh, terms of crawl, walk, run, because I don't want to get too off track. I, I think, uh, let, let's start with the term. I think we have some common ground. I guess a- anybody have feedback that they don't, don't have, or have a strong opinion against 10 years? Uh, Mr. Lamb?
No, no feedback against it. Um, uh, we did not like the idea of a five-year for the same reasons being brought up. Just a lot of work for something that would, would need to be done again so quickly. But yeah, we'd be in favor of 10-year.
We've heard from, uh, Mr. Moyer. Uh, Brian, I know your perspective is you want the additional build in the backend. Do you have any other thoughts apart from that piece?
I, I think our group would support a 10-year with, with a handful of maybe five-year options or something like that.
Yeah. And I, I, I don't know, Brenda, I'd have to get to the specifics, but I think the way this thing would have to be structured, right? Is that it would be due to run out at the end of 10 years unless it was renewed for an additional period, whatever that may be. And I, I would prefer it be five or 10 years again. I mean, at the end of the day, those, the people in charge at that point can make the determination, but so, so Mrs. Reed said she's on board. I, I am. Mr. Stubbs, I guess you're the last one.
I already said I'm in favor of a, uh, 10-year. I'm fine with 10-year.
Hey, look at that. We made some progress. So, okay. Yeah, we, we, uh, we lost a, a person real quick. So I think it, it makes sense to take a five-minute bathroom break. We made our first bit of progress in the last couple of weeks, uh, or months. So I, I think we'll celebrate that with a bathroom break and, uh, we'll be back in five minutes for everybody.
All right, I think our five-minute break is over, has come to a close. So we left off on a really positive note. So I'm actually going to turn this over to Mr. Amer because he's doing such a great job over there. I'm going to let him keep going.
I, I don't know how far we'll get tonight. Hopefully, we can keep burning and churning. But I think the last two things before we would probably need some organization and documents. And Brian, I need help with what we would even do next. But I, I guess is the, the percentage that we're talking about and then the split between the, the four entities. So let's talk percentage first. That'll tell us how many dollars we're hopefully talking about and then we can talk split. So on the percentage, I, I know, Mr. Stubbs, you, you're strongly in favor of the 1%. I guess to give everyone context, the estimate at one and a half percent again is $500,000 during the construction phase, which would become $300,000 roughly at a 1%, so it's about $200,000 difference, so relatively substantial. And then once we get into the, the second phase where it's the, the teachers and everyone at the building, it would be an estimate of $150,000 at a one and a half percent. And actually, it's 140, I believe, because right, the board would stay in German Town for a time period. So $140,000 at a one and a half percent on a going basis every year versus, let's call it $90,000 to $95,000 a year at a 1% rate. So I guess the first thing to ask, because I think we could get a quick win on this if the answer is yes. Brenda, is it possible to do a one and a half percent during construction phase that transitions to a 1% during the, the teacher in the building phase? Or not after the building phase, teachers in a going basis?
Yes, you can write that into the contract upfront with the caveat that it's the-
Hold on, hold on one second, Brenda. I'm sorry, we, we lost our administrator, so we need to get you off mute. Okay, give it a try, Brenda.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so yes, you could write into the contract that for the construction period or until occupancy of the building or for a five-year period, it would be one and a half and then it would drop down to 1% after that period or when that trigger is hit. You know, caveat, of course, being that the income tax for German Town doesn't fall below that one and a half before the end of that five-year because you can't charge higher during the JED than whatever your municipality tax that you're benching off of is. You can be less than their tax, but you can't be higher. So if for some reason German Town would lower their tax, you would automatically have to lower yours too, even if you hadn't hit the five-year mark. But assuming all constants, yes, you can have a one and a half for a period, a designated period that you pre-write into the contract and a different rate for another period of time.
Thank you.
If, if we use the one and a half percent, does German Town have to be the administrator? Or do we just have to, well, I guess, could farmers will collect, but still collect that one and a half percent? And I'll caveat that by saying Farmersville's income tax is at 1% currently.
Right. I, I'm going to have to do some checking and get back to you on that. It is so rare that there are actually two municipalities involved in a JED. I haven't dealt with that, using one entity's income tax rate and a different entity as administrator. So I am going to have to check on that and follow up with you guys.
Mr. Moyer just sent me a message that the, he was, he's on board with the one and a half percent construction and then 1% after that.
I have a, I have a quick clarification. Yeah, I've got a quick question. Can you guys hear me? I assume you can hear me. So the period that we can set the one and a half or the one, whatever the rate may be, can that be determined by an event like construction end? Or does that have to be a timeframe as in months, years, et cetera?
You can put in a triggering event, but you're going to want it to be something well-defined like certificate of occupancy as opposed to end of construction. Well, what's the end of construction? So yes, you can have a triggering event so long as it's clear and well-defined.
Is there any issue with the two, so you said it's on two different parcels, right? So- Can they hear you? That would be good for everyone to- Stand by.
And Brenda, you can weigh in, but my understanding is, and this is where it got to be, you know, a lot of noise in the community. So I want to make this clear. When we establish the JED, we write what, what is included in that JED district, right? And it could be one, three, or five parcels, whatever, and it, and it has to be then approved by us township trustees and we all have to be on board. But once that's established, it, it doesn't branch out further. There has to be a lot of other things occur because that was some confusion from the community. But we can encapsulate more than one parcel from the beginning, right?
Yes, you, you can include as many parcels as you want, but correct. You must define the area and the maps must be attached to the documents before the public hearings, before it's approved by anybody. And then you, to add parcels to it, you have to go through this whole process again. So adding parcels is the same as starting over essentially and creating a whole new JED. You can, the board, the JED board will not be able to expand the territory by itself. It has to go back to all the parties and you have to go through the public hearing process and the vote by all the township trustees and all the city councils again. The JED board cannot just by itself expand its own territory.
I, yeah, I don't, I don't know how that would work because the, they need to eventually be doing renovation, some construction in the current high school, right? Because they're going to reuse that building, at least abating all the asbestos and whatever else. And if we can't ex-
Right, but I think you would have to have the new building up and going. The kids in there, the junior high would have to stay put for another, I would assuming another year, half year, whatever, for them to do their work. So you're, you may have a little bit of construction that's done after the fact, but I would feel like 90%, 95% of the construction is going to be done with that, with the building, the new buildings. And then whatever they do to readjust, I don't, I don't see that as significant as, I don't, I hope that doesn't derail us.
No, I, I agree. I would, I would, I don't know if the triggering event can be this specific or if this is even called vague, but I would make the triggering event when they get the, the new campus established and they started school class in that new campus. And then whatever happens with the junior high, if there's more construction later, it's just at a 1% at, at that point in time. But once they get that new building open and schools in session at the new building, then it transitions.
What I was hearing that is we can't, in order to expand the JED, we basically, she just said, we have to essentially redo this process, right, to, to expand to another parcel. So-
If they're not all same, so if they combine all three parcels, then it covers. It would, in my opinion, it would cover. Because it would be one thing, but if you, if they keep them separate, so they join the two new parcels, you guys make a JED on that, but not the high school, then yes, you have to redo everything for the high school parcel. But if they combine all of the parcels, then it would be a problem.
Except the teachers at the high school will pay one and a half percent for five years.
Which they're not currently because-
Well, that's a question.
I don't think so.
I, I don't know. There's a couple of things, so it may be moot point. If we change the splits, do we have to start this process over anyways? Yeah.
I don't know. That's a good question. Yeah, Brenda, does the, can the JED board vote to change the percentage split in the JED? Or is that a, does that go back to each of the councils and each of the trustees?
So that would be an amendment, an amendment of the JED agreement itself. And so the parties would have to agree to that, not the JED board, but the townships and the municipalities who were parties to the agreement would have to agree to amend that.
So, so we don't need to start this process over if we change the splits as long as we all agree on that piece of it? I guess the only thing I'm getting at is I, I didn't know if it was a moot point, we had to start over anyways. But I, I guess, Brenda, again, weigh in on this. But I, I would want to make sure we have all that land included because we don't, I mean, know exactly where they're going to sit and all that kind of stuff. We want all three of those parcels to be part of the JED. If they become one parcel in the future, I don't know to Haley's point, if you can weigh in today or need to look into that, if, if we actually need to specify coordinates, you know, rather, because if you specify a parcel today when it was established, but it only, was only half of that land and then that parcel becomes more, does that cause issues too? Do we need to do something different if that, there's three parcels today that we really want to rope into the, the JED?
Okay, so you're going to define it by parcel numbers and a map and a legal description. So what that land is today is what is going to be in the JED. If somebody comes along and you've got three parcels today, let's say they add to one of the parcels. So they take a fourth parcel that's not in the JED and they take parcel number three, which is in the JED, and they go through the county plating process and they replat subdivision plats or whatever, and they turn parcels three and four into a single parcel now. And four goes away and it all becomes three. Still, only half of three is in the JED. That part that was originally four is not automatically in the JED now just because it's been consolidated with parcel three. So you're still going to have to go back to the original map and legal description and when determining whether or not the JED can tax a particular building, it's going to depend on where it sits on that new consolidated parcel three now. It's not automatically going to be taxed. If it's on the other half of the parcel, it's not in the JED. If the building straddles the line that used to be three and four, then the tax administrator is going to have all kinds of fun. But the whole building is not in the JED. And so the employees, you know, on the south side of the building have to pay and on the north side don't have to pay. And it creates some interesting fun if that were to happen. But it, you can't just re-parcels and plats and add more territory to the JED by doing that.
Here, I will unmute.
What, what, what if they combine all of the parcels before the JED is official?
Could you hear that?
People are cutting out for, for chunks and I don't know if it's just me who can't hear some of the session. But what I last heard was what if they consolidate, if there's three parcels now, what if they consolidate all three of those parcels into a single parcel? Doesn't matter. I mean, if that's the area you want for the JED, you're going to define it by a map and a legal description and whatever parcel number or numbers exist when the JED is created. If those three parcels then become one or get combined into one and then split into six, it doesn't matter. They're in the JED and they're going to stay in the JED and nothing else is going to be added to them without going through the process.
That, that's clear. I think where we're at today, just, just for crystal clear and that we can move past this hopefully quickly, is today we, we're thinking one parcel, we're wanting two more. So we're just making sure that we still have time in the future to, to be able to label that entire piece of land because we haven't talked about that piece yet because that was just acquired by the school here in a, a land swap just, you know, in the last six months. So we're, we're not past that point yet.
Okay, yeah, you're going to have to decide exactly what you want in the JED and then we're going to have to detail it.
Okay, we, we know what it is and we can give it to you today because that, that has become finalized at this point. Haley's point is, i- is it better just to wait though until they, well, and I don't know what is. We, we just need to define the coordinates and give you the three parcels today, but they are in the future combining those into one parcel. It's not being completed and recorded at the county yet, but it's, it's three parcels as of today and, and we can give you that. We, we have it defined in, in our heads, but that's what I'm going to make sure that we don't need to have it defined somewhere else or have any other vote or anything before we move forward. We'll, we'll leave that there. I think hopefully everyone's clear enough on that. So let's get back to the, the percentage piece of it. So the numbers, real quick, again, 500,000 construction at one and a half percent, 300,000 at 1% for the construction phase on a going basis, 140,000 at one and a half percent, or 95,000 at 1%. So we're talking 50,000 a year on a going basis in the future during the construction phase. It, it, it would be substantial. I think we're all in alignment that the 500,000 at one and a half percent is what we would hope to shoot for. Everybody's aligned and agreed on that. And a 1% at about $90,000 to $95,000 collection or, or gross revenue in the going basis in the future and everyone's okay with that. So I'll give it a second without going around the table just to see if there's any objections. Otherwise, I think we are on agreement, the triggering thing will be once the new campus is built and there are students in class, that we would switch over to a 1%. However, that needs to be written up in legalese, Brenda. So I guess I'm going to go on mute. Anybody object if you have any other opinion? Otherwise, we'll consider this settled.
I have some questions. So, okay, sorry. So my questions are, I, I think personally it's going to be difficult to say when I've, and you might be more involved with this, Mr. Amer, about when they take occupancy of the building because I think that can be done in phases. So I'm not sure from our perspective, we should say any percentage is going to change occupancy because then are we going to do percentage of occupancy? Or I feel like that needs to be a year, you know, for five years or for however long that is decided as opposed to an occupancy thing. Or I feel like that needs to be a year, you know, for five years or for however long that is decided as opposed to an occupancy thing because of that. Uh, because of all of the unknowns. My fear with leaving it as a one percent, once the construction is gone, is that you're looking at only splitting 95,000. I believe that's what I've written down amongst four entities. If Mr. Stubbs has said he strongly believes we need an SRO and we're going to have these ongoing costs. When you start splitting 95,000 four ways, that's not a, a lot of money, a lot of leeway there, whereas at least with the one and a half, it does give us an extra 45-ish roughly thousand to be able to split, um, amongst the four entities to help alleviate. I know some of our costs in a Farmersville said they're going to have some costs with the water and things like that, so. I would prefer to leave it as a one and a half percent for the 10 years. And after the 10 years, they can look at it because that would be when it would re-up. Anyways, they can change or alter it then. If they say, look, we, we don't really need this one and a half percent, we can move it down to one percent. That's my feeling on it.
That's where you're increasing the tax of people that live in Germantown. And Farmersville really too. You're, if we leave it at the one percent, people aren't going to be paying extra. They're going to be paying basically a- as much extra. Um, they're going to basically be paying what they pay now, and that would be the reason to leave it at one point or one point zero after the fact and not have an additional cost to the people that are going to be paying the income tax.
Okay, so Mr. Walsh is going to help me out with this one. Germantown's current tax rate is one and a half. So if their current tax rate is one and a half, we would not be taxing Germantown citizens more than i- if it's, if we're leaving it at one and a half. There's this one and a half now.
Yes, so that was, that was one thing I was going to get to. So, so I just ran earlier today, I ran a couple of examples. Um, and this is only looking at Germantown, Farmersville and township employees, right? You could, and obviously a majority of our teachers actually don't live out here apparently, based on the numbers that the school gave us. If, if only 40 of the, um, intermediate high school teachers, or no, it was 20 total live in Germantown. I don't know how many live in Farmersville, how many live in the township, but my life's a teacher, I know a lot of them actually live in Centerville, Miami, it's where, you know, elsewhere. But for example, if you, if an employee lives in Germantown, they work in Germantown. One and a half percent regardless. If they live in Germantown and work in Farmersville. They actually pay 1.9% because they pay 1% to Farmersville plus 0.9% to Germantown after we give the 60% credit. Um, if they live in Germantown, work at the high school, again, one and a half percent because there's no current income tax at the high school. And if they live in Germantown and work in the JED at one and a half percent. Um, they would actually pay 2.1%. So that's one and a half percent to the JED plus, uh, 6.6% to Germantown after the credit. So Farmersville is actually, because they're less than our percentage of one and a half. They pay the full 1% to Farmersville and then we give them 60% of the credit that they've already paid. So they actually pay, end up paying slightly more. Now, if an employee lives in Farmersville that works in Germantown at the primary school, today, they're paying two and a half percent. So you, you could do a thousand scenarios like this, right? If you live in Farmersville, you're paying 1%. If you live in Farmersville and work in the JED, you end up paying that same two and a half percent. If you live in German Township or Jackson Township and work at the high school today, you'd be zero dollars, right? Because there's no income tax out there. So part of us, you know, we, we started, or maybe it was just me, started going down the rabbit hole with we're going to lock it in at one and a half percent for the first five years. And we're going to end up hurting those teachers that are at the high school for five years, right? Because those teachers are going to end up paying, if they live in Germantown, 2.1%. But then you look, there's already teachers paying two and a half percent in that. And there's, there's a thousand more scenarios depending on where they live, right? So my opinion is we're getting too hung up on this. I talk to my wife all the time, her opinion is the teachers are happy to have a new building and they would pay 3% for new air conditioning, right? Now she's at the primary school. The, the high school teachers maybe not so much, they already have AC. So I'm pushing, I mean, I'm confused if you guys asked for the past couple of years that have failed, you know, it's not like there's not a need, and I'm not saying you balance it off their backs, but you're also really lowering the tax rate that some of these teachers are going to end up paying, right? I mean, is that fair either? I don't know. Yep, that was.
All right, the comment from Mr. Heaton, I will read that. Says, what about the employees of the present high school? Will they be part of the one and a half percent JED construction years? Or wait to start paying 1% when the new building is occupied and the junior high moves to the present high school building? So I think that's kind of what we're discussing right now, I think, or deciding upon.
Yeah, so if, if we put it at one and a half percent during construction, the, it would, it would encompass the entire JED, right? It would encompass the current building as well, so those teachers for that five years or up until occupancy, whatever we decide to say would, would would pay that one and a half percent. I would argue locking in at one and a half percent throughout, but that's only because we know there's needs there. We have needs. I know you guys have needs. And so you lower the rate to 1%, you're kind of doing the same thing. Some of the teachers are going to end up getting a tax cut. But then you're going to go out and ask for a levy or a police levy or whatever else, and it's like, well, you had the ability to collect up to one and a half percent. Instead, you gave some teachers a tax cut. And trust me, I, I will always support the teachers, obviously. No offense, I'm actually rooting for a tax increase here for myself, but I, I just, I just think it makes sense. Leave it at that.
Do you want to get closer then? I don't think they can hear you. I think they can.
Uh, another bit of information, uh, in regards to when to make, slice it and dice it as to when to stop it for the construction or whatever. I think that there is a plan, not necessarily in place, but a general plan that they will build the new high school first. And then move the high schoolers into the new high school and then continue to build. So it's not going to be like build the entire campus, we all move in like in Carlisle, just it. It's going to be like build this building, they move in, build the next building, they move in type scenario. So that might change how you want to put those in place.
Yeah.
Actually looking at phasing it even more now because they don't have the state revenue yet. And so I know there's discussion of adding phases to the initial plan, right? So.
Let's speak for them. But it, it's a program that allowed them to collect their current, like their local dollars so that they can start the project. And then they'll get the state stuff later and finish the project.
I don't know that it matters though. Regardless of the phasing. At the end of the day, we want either the single parcel or the three parcels, including the JED. And that just may mean that for a period of time, if, if we don't do, if we don't lock it in at one and a half percent for the entire time, then for a period of time, that building is still going to get to one and a half percent. I don't see, I don't see another way around it.
There's a comment over here. I will go ahead and read it since I read the other one. It's, uh, from Mr. Heaton. Didn't you discuss at an earlier meeting that there's an ability to carp out the present building until the new building is occupied? If I recall, Mr. Heaton, and please Brenda, correct me if I'm wrong. I thought it was one of those like, it might be possible, but it was kind of difficult to do if I recall correctly.
If they don't include that parcel.
Oh, it's by parcel. Okay. Brenda, feel free to jump in and correct me.
At the previous meeting, what we discussed, if we were going to do a five-year plan, we could carve it, or if we're going to do a construction-only plan, we could carve basically it out around that building, so it doesn't affect the current teachers. But you can't, if you want to change the, um, physical property of the JED, we have to do this again.
So when the legislature last amended the JED statute, so the ones that we're, we're working with. They did put in some, uh, unusual provisions that allow you to charge the income tax on some parcels, but not all parcels. Um, so depending on how the site is structured, you could potentially say we're charging, you know, one and a half percent on parcels one and two during this five-year period, and then we're charging 1% on all three parcels for the next five years. And any renewal term. But you have to spell that out exactly in the contract upfront. Exactly where the income tax is going to be applied and for what period of time and at what rate. And then if it's going to change, you have to specifically lay that out. You can't put something in there and then in five years say, oh, we need to change this because that's going to trigger you know, the whole amend the thing process.
So then my argument is locking in at one and a half percent. If we didn't want to do that, then the school is fine to combine the two outer parcels, but they better leave the high school as one to give us that flexibility.
Okay. No, I'm sorry. I appreciate, we're just talking. I, I was saying, I, I want to make sure we're all clear because my understanding was it was going to be all the parcels for everything that the school was on, both today's school and the future school. Because to the, to Brenda's point, we don't want really a situation, and I don't think anybody would want a situation where uh, high school teachers are paying maybe nothing because we carved them out in the beginning and they pay nothing forever. And then the, the rest of the campus has to pay. And I think that's, that would be foolish. And we can't really change midstream, right? Is that clear? Like, we can't change midstream. So we have to car, put it all in the same parcel and, uh, we can only, only thing we can do is up or down or change the percentage at certain trigger points. I guess we could go up too, but that would be kind of pointless. So he- here is my thing for maybe another compromise. I think, you know, Abra and, and Brian, you've, you've made points for one and a half percent throughout. Um, Mr. Stubbs, myself, switching to a 1%. What if we came to a, uh, somewhat of a compromise? That we would do a, a one and a half through construction and we can do it one of two ways. Either through the five years, as you said, like do a year setting. Or I, I, I didn't realize they were doing all this phasing stuff because of the funding, but I was going to say, we can do it when the, when the permits of construction's been complete. Then we can do it because that becomes a lot less of who moves in when. It's like when the construction's done, then we quit, you know? But if that's not going to be all at once Haley, and that's not your expectation, okay? Then we probably do need to do a year of some kind, and it can be five years or whatever we agree. But then the split, instead of us who probably will incur the most expenses taking a lion's share of the dollars. What if we did the straight 25, 25, 25 for the full 10 years? You guys get a little bit more revenue during that period, but it's not the one and a half percent. I think this is again, back to the whole community perspective, because the school teachers at high school, they're going from not being taxed at all to a one and a half percent. To your point, that won't be incremental to some people, just because where they, if they live in Spring Grove, it's not incremental. You know, it just, it just depends, but, uh, they're going to get a one and a half percent that they haven't been paying today, some of them. Um, they can lower that to 1% a- after five years. I think that the school teachers moving out there, they're already being taxed, a lot of them, and anybody that would be incremental. One and a half percent in getting new schools and like just having a, a, working in a place that you have pride in, air conditioning, all, I think they would be okay with that. Especially knowing that it may or may not end after 10 years. So I, I feel like from an overall community perspective, I think and, and back to the final point, I think this is where we align most strongly on is the, the 1% piece is more out of a principle piece of what are we justifying collecting it on the teachers in a long-term period? And, and to say, if we only collect 1% um, and just to make sure that we have the structure in place to give all benefits that we need to them. And we can offer them some of the minimus, you know, $15,000 is the contribution to the JED. We still take and split somewhere around 75, $80,000 even after administrative fees, which could be $20,000 apiece over that five-year period. I think that's substantial enough to cover some incremental costs that we would all incur. It gets you guys a bridge gap. Um, but I think that's a, a, uh, fair and reasonable compromise. What do you guys thought?
Sorry, we were, we lost some members here on, that were not here presently, so we were just touching base about, about that. Um, sorry, you, I don't, I didn't want to interrupt where you were at.
I think, I think I'm done. I just, I'm proposing that we split it 25% across the board to the four entities. I, I, I wouldn't call that fair, I, but I think it's a compromise again, and then the, the last piece is then going from one and a half to one. But that, that still gives a, a chunk of a split to Germantown and, uh, Farmersville. Who definitely in years five through 10 will not be incurring any additional services. In fact, probably are saving on a few services at least. Well, and that, that's something to talk about. I mean, I, I, again, I, I like the community perspective, but again, we need to think, you know, through the numbers if they actually make sense. I mean, Jackson, that, that's one place that we, we could still give them money, absolutely. But I, I don't see it completely out of line if we do want to talk that maybe we only split 10 to 15% their direction, you know? Um, but I, 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 we gotta be careful on how we think through that, because then it's like, what's the justification? Because then you're getting into who's providing the service and then it's like, well, why are we, the other three splitting it equal? Then why don't we do based on a service-based approach? So I, I, I don't know that that makes sense. It's kind of like either 25, 25, 25, or we get down to, well, it's all estimate our costs. And then we get in a big match on who's got what cost and I, I just don't want to get into that necessarily if we don't have to. If we can all be satisfied on the 25% split and the decreasing one and a half to one, I, I think that's a win that we could all walk away with feeling pretty good about. And the teachers and the communities all should feel good about that as well.
Well, I'd like to follow up, and I'm glad Nick's back because I don't want to affirm one of the best when he wasn't here. But when speaking 25, 35, you're giving farmers one more than they're even asking for, right? So, so we're going to have them beyond making them whole, which is fine. I like Nick, but and second, Jackson. And I, no problem with Jackson either, right? But if, if you're 1% and we're talking around $100,000 or $90,000, you know, it's, it's $20,000 that they aren't doing anything for, right? I, I mean, the way I look at it, you're asking us to pay Jackson for?
Police.
I don't know.
Police.
I mean.
Don't forget the police.
Don't get me wrong. I just don't know that it's, I don't have any idea where we're at with this. Why we would end up paying Jackson $25,000 a year? I mean, I, I can't, I couldn't justify that.
Well, I mean, in theory, we could do it without Germantown. Use Farmersville's income tax rate, use the two town, one or two townships and get the same result. So we've talked about community before. Um, the townships obviously would stick together, but it's about the community. It's not, we're, we're not, at 25,000, I'm not sure we're going to cover our losses, but at least it's, it's fair for everybody. At $25,000, you're not necessarily going to cover your losses. Uh, Jackson Township and Farmersville, I, I, I don't know what expenses. And because we've never, still, I mean, we're, we're nine months, 12 months into this. We've never seen hard numbers, so.
You've got numbers right there.
But those are estimates. You, we've never, ever been presented with the amount of money lost that will be lost by the city of Germantown, that will be lost by the city of Village of Farmersville. We've got estimates and then it's changed. But it changes all the time. So we've gone from $70,000 to $90,000, and once you said 100, and then today we come up with, well, we're $20,000 off of what we actually said.
That's a negative estimate because that's been so much better.
Right, it's all estimate. We have no facts to go off of, so that, that gives him and his idea more credence because if we're on 25% apiece, we don't have hard numbers anyway. So in the.
Also heard tonight though that you guys had $100,000, $103,000 in added costs. When the very next person in the comments said, there's absolutely no added cost for the police department. These are all estimates. We're just, we're trying to figure this out.
Well, the one salary we brought up was that actual officer's salary, so, but if, and if that officer specifically went as an SRO, that's what his salary would be. That's where that came from. That's where that came from. But I'm, I'm in favor of what Tyler is leaning towards. I definitely prefer the 1% after five years. I would prefer 1% the whole way through, but I'm fine with one and a half percent upfront. And I think it's a compromise. We've talked about community and how important it is to the community. Well, isn't it community to, to make this work at a fair, equal, at an equal split?
But is it? I don't know. That doesn't seem fair to me. Why don't you give Jackson Township 25% of everything if they contribute nothing to the entire thing? I want to include them, right? I want to include them in the construction costs, but every scenario I've ever run doesn't, I cannot justify throwing money at them for not contributing anything. It doesn't make sense to me.
So, yeah, I think we got a fundamental difference because it's back to the, the point of what are we collecting the revenue for? It's supposed to be to serve as the future JED, whereas you still have, and I understand Brian, why. You're representing your town. I get it. But you're, you're still thinking about the sunk impact that we cannot change. Whether we do a JED or not, you're losing an X amount of revenue, right? And it's more than you'll probably ever collect in the future because unless we went at one and a half percent and gave you guys 50 or 75%, we just couldn't make you whole, right? And so that's where this disconnect and I struggle and I, I don't know what the right answer is because I do feel a little odd giving Jackson Township that much. Particularly for one reason, I don't feel like they wanted to engage in this discussion much or been that concerned about it, whether it passes or fails. So that, that piece of community and collaboration, I'm struggling with a little bit. But, but greater than that, back to the school level piece, and I'm not here to preach. But there has been a lot of disconnect between Germantown and Jackson Township. Farmersville even in Germantown for a little long period of time and it runs deep. And I do see this as an absolute opportunity for us to take a leadership role in the community and say that all four entities are as important as each other going forward. Unfortunately, it's never going to make you whole and what happened and what's happening. But, but that's ship's sail because we've already determined that we're putting schools out on there and you're losing that revenue. And so I personally am almost making like a die on the cross type stand on this one that, that I don't want people to question, they come along in 10 years and say, well, why the hell did Jackson Township only get 10%? And you schmoes get third? Like, they're not going to know, well, it was because Germantown did lose this revenue, you know, years back and all this. It just looks terrible. That's not, that's not the way the community should operate. That's not the way we should operate principally based on reporting in the future for the JED. I don't think that's the right way to operate. So it is a tough pill to swallow. But I think in five years, it's a much easier pill to swallow than the 30, 30, 10 type split.
Okay, I have a question. So as far as our residents go for Germantownship, right now, this paper says if, this is a one and a half percent, because that's just what I have in front of me. 22,000 for Germantownship. Now, I'm going to unfortunately, a little bit throw Brian off second under the bus a little bit, not really. Through conversations that him and I have had, that is a very negotiable number and could be in the mid 30s if we can negotiate that. He just said tonight that, oh, I think there's $19,600 that they would still incur. So if we were able to make that just 22 plus 20, that's 42,000. So we're sitting here at the beginning of the conversation. Mr. Stubbs is saying, we need 103,000 or 77,000 for an SRO. And then in the next turn, two and a half hours later, we're saying, but we're only going to take 25 when we could have 42. So if we really believe in our hearts, or some of us think in our hearts that we have to have an SRO and it's going to cost 77,000, how do we justify to our residents giving up that $20,000 a year?
Well, I think at this point, we're beyond the SRO, right? So we're beyond the SRO and you have stated that the school doesn't even need it or may not want it or whatever. So I think we're beyond that point. I think we're to the point where we're down to negotiating percentages. And, you know, growing up here and before, a little bit before our time, not much, maybe our parents a little younger, that Germantown-Farmersville divide is there. I have friends that are Farmersville Wildcats that graduated with us. And I, you know, it's there, it's there and it's something that I, I didn't think about it until you said it, but you're right. It does bring an opportunity to bring us together as the Valley View community, which is what this is about, right? So it's a value of your community. It's not about us losing X amount of dollars at this point. It's about doing what's right for the community. We already know it can't be about making anyone whole. That's not a purpose of a JED. That's already been stated multiple times. Can't do the purpose. So if we're going to go through this, and we, and we talked about at the, Brian, I believe was youthful, it was the beginning of the last meeting, said, it's fair to split the cost of the lawyer 25% and the setup cost 25%. Well, then in the same, by the same flip of the coin, it's fair to dish out the money to the same percentages, so.
We just offered to, we offered to cover the fees as our, made sense. And I think everybody jumped on board that we'd split that to do with the revenues.
But let's be clear, there's a difference between fair and there's a difference between what's, what's right. And what's right can be subjective to some degree, but, but no one's going to get to fair. We're never going to get to fair. Like, it's not fair that you lost all this revenue. It's not fair that Mr. Lamb and Farmersville lost their revenue. It's not fair that our team sat in a school without air conditioning for years. Like, that's not, that's not fair. We got to think about what is reasonable and right in our minds moving forward. I think, you know, Mrs. Reece, I think you made a great point again, back to the SRO expenses rule. And the SRO piece is gone, but I think, you know, we came in here and Jake did bring some numbers that were big that we thought we might incur. I think at the end of the day, the way we've all kind of aligned and agreed to try to, to compromise, which we're going to have to continue to do to get this thing to go forward, is that we can take a little bit less in order to agree upon this and move forward, which may or may not cover all our expenses, but it gives us that five-year period to see what they are. And Brenda, the only thing I would say, if you could additionally weigh in is at the, when we go to renew for a 10-year period, is there any flexibility in potentially going back up to one and a half percent? If for some reason everyone feels that we're short on funds or whatever it may be? Or is that something you can't change in the JED without having some kind of vote? Or what is the process then? If we get to the end of the 10-year term and we want to go from 1% back up to one and a half, what would it take?
I believe, and I will need to verify, I believe that's a JED board decision. That as long as you're still at or under the maximum rate, that you're permitted, the JED board could do that in the future.
Okay, and that's something I would ask you to confirm if you don't mind. But so that's something we can nail out. I think we're so close here and I don't know if it's going to take one more meeting and we need to do a few more follow-ups. I don't want to hold everyone. It's, it's 8:30. I'll leave you guys to give me input. Where I'm at is I think we've got a lot of good progress. 10 years, I think five years, we all agree is one and a half percent on the construction collection. I think we all agree it needs to be all three parcels. And I think then we just need to figure out that second half. If it's one and a half, one and a quarter, or one. I mean, there's things to do, but then I think the last thing I want to walk away without any ifeans or butts on, and this is the one that's going to be hardest for you to swallow, is the 25% split. I think it's the right thing to do for creating a JED. I think it's the right thing for the community to hold. And at the end of the day, maybe we can urge Mike Moyer to build some kind of amphitheater at the school with his extra cash he has laying around now. I mean, I, I just feel like that's the right play.
Yeah, so that's not something I'm standing up to tonight.
I haven't been able to chime in on the split.
Right? I mean, I'm going to go to him and say, I just gave Jackson Township 35,000 dollars they didn't want. No, no, I'd be kicked out and I'm not doing my duty to the citizens you're down to either. I mean, I understand all the talking points and fairness and everything else. I don't think the purpose of the JED was ever to make us whole. As it says at the top here, that was our goal, our goal is to keep us whole, right? With the full understanding, we may walk away without being kept whole. But at the same time, I, how, how am I supposed to justify taking the large chunk of that tax base and giving it to an entity that's contributing nothing, doing nothing? And didn't even ask for it. They said they'd be happy with a dollar.
They're also, they're contributing police. I mean, they're going to, their police are going to be showing up. Jackson Township Police is Farmersville Police. Jackson Township covers it all. So their police officers are going to be at the building. It's not like they're doing nothing.
But if Jackson's there, our cops will be out there once in a while.
Hey, I, I think your point is valid in one way. If they said they didn't want any money, then I'm happy to change the split. If they really don't want any money, I think they need to show up to the next meeting. We've made progress now. I think we need to get them enrolled to, to have a discussion. If, if they really said they didn't want anything, then let's go three ways, okay? And that's, that's where I'd be fine. If they feel like there's heartburn and they, they think that there's something they can contribute and we're all a community. I think, I think the other thing I would say is, you say, we're, we're losing money or this. No, we're all standing here today on a level playing field. You've lost the money that has nothing to do with the JED. That's gone. Now we have to determine, you're not giving anyone any money. It's how do we split future revenues that are coming in? And so I get your council's position. I could stand in front of them all day and say, you guys have nothing until we create a JED and then we get to split however that split is. Forget about what you've lost because it's water under the bridge, guys.
Also, oh, sorry, just also at the end of the day, if we don't do a JED, you get zero too. So you pointed out that, I mean, we could lose out. If we don't do this, you get zero, we get zero. I mean, that's just where it's at. So also, we mentioned earlier too, that the teachers being willing to pay the extra income tax, you know, for the good of the community because we got new buildings. Well, at the same, by the, again, by the same flip of that coin, isn't it okay then that the city of Germantown take a little bit of a loss for the good of the community to have the new buildings, to have the new facilities out there as well? So.
I think, yeah, I think we've, we've said that all along, that we'd be willing to negotiate these numbers. What I don't want to do is come in and say across the board 25% without putting any thought, any reason, nothing behind it.
Can we, can we leave it at this for tonight? Because we've been here forever. Can we leave it at this for tonight that we, we agree on 10 years? We agree on the premise of the first five years at 1.5%? And that, but, well, and then potentially with either the 1.5% or 1% for the second five years. So that's 10 years. What we still have to discuss and agree upon is a percentage split. One thing I will bring up too, and I hate to, to even start down that road, but if we're going to change this, when we had the water district issue, Germantownship and Jackson Township split that 60, 40. So it, what I'm saying is it was 60% to 40. Germantownship paid 60% of the debt. Jackson Township paid 40%. So community-wise, would we be on board with Germantown and Germantownship getting 60% of it? And Jackson Township and Farmersville getting 40? I'm still in favor of the 25, 20% split. Even though we're, we could get more if we go the other way. But that's how we split the water district. And that's how we deem that as fair. So that's just something to consider. But how about if we end the meeting now before we have any other issues to derail us? Yeah, sure. But go, go forward, go back to our own boards. We're all here, but the rest of you, go back to your boards. With the 10 years is what we're going for. 1.5 is what we're going for, potentially down to 1% for the second five years. And we still need to figure out the, the splits.
Okay, here's my question. This may make it a little complex, but I hope not. So there's been some discussion. I know we discussed it at our last meeting. Construction has not started out there. So this is obviously really wishful thinking in the next 10 days. But if the JED would start in 2021, it says construction, this is obviously not true numbers. That Ger- Germantownship get the money from the high school employees until construction starts, since that is not money that goes to Germantown or anybody else now. It's currently on this paper that I keep looking at. I hear it says it's the high school tax revenue is split amongst the four entities. To me, that just makes the most sense to have it go to us since the other people are already being made whole. Germantown, Farmersville, they're still getting their money. Until construction would start, we, Germantownship would at least get that.
I think you're.
Go ahead, go ahead. I was just going to say, go ahead.
I, I think you're brilliant because I think you uncovered a third best solution, which is during that five years where you're already being made whole, you're putting your 25% in the bank and that's carrying you down the road for at least five years of being made whole after that. I think that gets us 10 years in at even a 1%. And what more can we ask for? You got carried, covered up revenue for 10 years. That's what I'd carry back to your council. And I think, I mean, to me, that was spot on. They're going to be made whole for the first five years because the teachers aren't even leaving for several years. All that revenue collected and passed out at 25% should be money put in the bank to carry the future five years when they are collecting a little bit less. So we can leave it there, but that's what I would carry back. And I think that, I think it's going to take a strong argument for me to come off 25% for the reasons I stated tonight.
So do the other entities and I guess.
Nick said he wanted to.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Lamb. You may go ahead and speak.
Yeah, for some reason I've tried to speak several times, but can't be heard, I guess. So, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, we just, we, you guys talked about the split. Obviously, it's a one-sided conversation here on the split. But, you know, Tyler mentioned that we have an opportunity to be leaders and, and, you know, include all communities. And then I heard that you're willing to just cut Jackson Township immediately as well. So I like the first part of what you said a lot better, that we have the opportunity to be leaders and bring everybody together. I don't think that a 25% split evenly is required to do that. We talked about fairness. What's interesting to me is that we, even at the last meeting, Germantown and Farmersville and Jackson Township all offered up the construction money to Germantownship. And it's almost like you're trying to talk us out of it, which is, I, I don't know. I just find that interesting from an outsider's perspective because we will be made whole for the next five years or during the construction period. So it's bonus money. We don't need it. We would, you know, if it helps you guys in the incremental expenses that you're going to incur over the next few years, we offered it to you. We'd like you to have it. And what's, what, the other thing that's interesting to me is that we're not asking for 25%. Jackson Township's not asking for 25%. So I, I think it is worth negotiating. I think we can negotiate, you know, a reasonable deal that makes sense for everybody. I mean, nobody in Farmersville is trying to get rich off of this. And in fact, there's some hesitation about even accepting a lot more than we are generating now as income, just because it feels a little, little dirty when we know that Germantownship is probably going to need some help. We know that Germantown is incurring a lot of loss. Yes, it's sunk. Yes, it's gone. Tyler and Jake have made that point numerous times. We get it. But in order for us to come together, be leaders in this community of Valley View, I have no problem saying, hey, this is what we got before. It would be awesome to get that moving forward. That would help us pay for the, that would help us pay for the additional costs for water. That would help us to incur what we, we did lose. So we win there. And then the other thing is, I know Jake brought up the fact that you don't necessarily need Germantown. I just, again, to stay on this same theme of community, I can, I can strongly speak for Farmersville and say, hey, look, if we're not all four included, then, you know, I just don't think it makes sense. I think it's an opportunity to include all four of us. And Jackson Township's not here. Mike Moyer texts me, said he's having problems with his internet. So that's unfortunate, but I can tell you that he's, they're not looking for 25%. They're not looking to make a hole, even a hole because they're not losing anything. But they will contribute their police force, just like they, they are now. So they're, they're not out of this thing. They do have a contribution. So I think we need to keep that in mind as well.
Nick, I appreciate you coming around full circle and saying exactly what I said. You know, as leaders, we should try to contribute at 25% or split it at 25%. But then future, in your discussion, you said exactly what I did. If, if you're not signing up for it and you guys don't want it and Jackson Township doesn't want it. But then future, in your discussion, you said exactly what I did. If, if you're not signing up for it, and you guys don't want it, and Jackson Township doesn't want it, then I'm more than happy to split it 30, 30, 10, if that's what they want. I'm not saying we should do that. I'm saying if they really don't want it truly, then we can negotiate it. But that's how I came full circle. I want it 25% across the board, because I think that's the right thing to do as leaders. I think that's what people would understand in five years. I mean, hell, half the people in our communities don't even have a clue this discussion is occurring. And in five years, they're not going to have a clue as to why we split it 10% for Jackson and 30% for the rest of us. So that's my point on the 25, 25, 25. Now, what I'll say is two pieces. If, if no one wants it from either Farmersville or Jackson Township, or wants a lot less, then I think that's a reasonable thing, because then you can say in 10 years, you can say, well, Jackson Township honestly said, we don't have that kind of cost, and we only need 10%. And they signed up for it. We didn't stick it to them. I think that's a pretty clear thing. So that's the only way I would get off the 25%. Unless you guys want to get back to, we only have a 10-year definite term, and you want to say, who's got what cost? And we really get down to estimates, which nobody has good estimates right now. And we say, Germantown, you deserve $80,000, and Jackson, or Germantownship, you deserved $80,000, and you guys only deserve 25, and Jackson Township only deserves 5. We can do that, but there's no way I'm going beyond 10 years. We'll make everyone whole for that period of time. And then after that, we're done, because we're not going to play the game of on the teacher's back for the next 30 or 40 years, based on what happened 20 years ago. I'm not going to be explaining that to my grandkids of why people are paying $80,000 to Germantown from the high school, when it was because they used to have the schools in Germantownship, or Germantown Cities. That's not going to happen.
Well, we've talked a lot about fairness too. I just think we kind of all can see where this is going to go from here. If if Germantown, and I'm not Germantown spokesperson, Brian, Brian is, but if Brian took that back to his council, because I know how it works for me in Farmersville, if he took that back to his council, they, I'm guessing they don't vote, they don't vote in favor of it. So we've lost Germantown, right? Then you'd have to convince Farmersville to somehow do it without Germantown. I don't want to get into that discussion, because I don't think that's the best thing to do for our community. But I think it's important to consider, when we negotiate, we all compromise, and we all have to make it so that Farmersville can say, yeah, that makes sense to us. Jackson Township says, yeah, that makes sense to us. Germantownship said, yeah, that makes sense to us. And Germantown says, yeah, we can get behind this too. I just think that's the only way it's going to work.
I agree. I guess the question back to you, Nick, is if you're sitting on the council, and let's put you in the Germantown council position, and you have two options, not agreeing to a JED, which gets you absolutely no money after five years when the school moves out of Germantown, right? Or you have the option of, we can get all the money we normally get for the next five years, as well as a 25% collection of the construction revenue, which gives us a buffer, that then we can use those coffers over the future five years, where we can get another 25% split at less than what we're collecting today, but we have that buffer built up. So basically, for the next 10 years, we can be whole. And you're telling me the option is voting it down, or being whole for 10 years, and you would turn that down as a council member?
If the alternative is that it would go to public vote, and I believe that the public would support a different plan, yeah.
I don't believe the public would, if this goes to a vote, it fails across the board. Absolutely. This will fail. Just the school issue, if you look at the township specifically, the school levy passed overall, but it barely passed in Germantownship, and I think it, it was either right, it was right at 50-50. Historically, yeah, but when you talk about taxing people, townships vote no. So
Yeah, the only thing I say, Jake, is that that's a lot of what I had to deal with the entire time, was everyone say, well, is there a JED in place? Is there a JED in place? I think there's enough education about the JED that people feel like it needs to be in place to make sure that we don't have issues. The thing I'm struggling with, and I'm baffled right now, because I feel like we've come so far tonight, Nick, that we can sit here and say that we can make entities whole for at least 10 years, and we'd have to sharpen the pencil to make sure that's true. And if not, then maybe we can do something more, but that we can make entities whole for 10 years, and somehow we don't think that that's a reasonable approach from this, from this JED board. I'm just baffled. Like, we've come so far, and that's a huge win for people to be good for 10 years. I mean, what more can we ask? Well, I don't know that I'm going to be good in any one of my other budgets for the next 10 years. I have no guarantee. So I'm, I'm just shocked by that.
I don't know if you want me to respond. We've already, I mean, I've already told you how I feel about this. Of course, Farmersville is not complaining about getting more money. I, I think everybody on our council has a vested interest in making sure that Germantownship and Germantown is taken care of in this situation. I don't know why you're baffled by that. But I think we still have made a lot of progress. We've all, we all agree on 10 years. I think we're all in favor of one and a half and a one, or one and a half all the way through. So if you're one always, I think, you know, somehow, some way, I think we've all kind of agreed that we can agree on those two terms. But I think we have some work to do on the split.
Fair enough, fair enough. I, I'm good. I appreciate it. I think what you said to me, because you didn't reiterate it. So what you're saying is that you think because there's a reliance on what the vote may do, that they think they may have a better option than just being guaranteed 10 years, that they may come out even better than that. And not, I, to me, I to you would say, I believe that's greedy, and I don't believe that's in the spirit of a community, and the 25% that you were behind for a minute and then got away from later. So at the end of the day, I think, let's, let's call it a night. I think we have made a lot of progress. Let's come back in a month, talk to your council, see what you think is reasonable. And if you think 10 years isn't good enough, come back and justify it.
I agree. I'm ready to go ahead and call this meeting. We've made a lot of progress. And I also feel like I've raised a lot of questions over the course of this, and I conceded a whole lot of issues that I feel like were important. So now that we've got to where it is, is palatable for, it should be palatable for all of us, a 25% for 10 years. I feel like, I feel like we've come a long way, but I feel like Germantownship's given in a lot along the way too, so.
But I'm being contagious. I'm going to argue with everybody. I would say they're giving up a ton. So, and I agree, but that's all about compromise. That's why I'm a little frustrated right here. It's like, we're getting to a point where we have a pretty good agreement that will cover people for 10 years, and we're still debating what's fair and stuff. So I agree. Let me, let me have a cool break, and we'll come back. But I think everyone's given up a lot, and that's me. We're in a good place. We're all a little bit frustrated. So that means everyone's kind of got equally pushed on this.
All right. So I would like to what? Oh, okay. Hold on just a second.
So scheduling the next one, I didn't realize I was not unmuted. Are we thinking in a month?
We get through the hall.
You don't want to do it Christmas Eve?
No.
Just kidding.
Mid, mid, end of the year.
Okay. Okay.
You mean to say what dates are?
I get what you're saying. It's like, let's keep this long.
Because we've got all that stuff beginning.
Yeah. So do you want me to tell them what days are not available, so they can look?
Because you have to read all of them for all your boards.
You're right.
Right.
Do you have me to
Sure. So we already have a meeting on the fourth and the seventh of that week.
I have one, two, three, five, six meetings already scheduled in January.
Well, I'm just trying to start at the first week. So if we start at the first week, I know Germantownship has one on the fourth, and the seventh are out for that week.
Tuesday's, Thursday's.
Okay, so
Wednesday's are available. The 13th will be after your monthly board meeting.
And that's because, that's another thing we need to do, is we need to give all the entities time to go back to their boards. Jackson Township needs the same night we do.
So do you want to ask if everybody's good?
Are you all available on Wednesday, the 13th, January 13th, same time, 6 o'clock? I would hate to do it later and not be out of here till 10. Nick seems to be okay. Tyler, are you available? Jake, I believe is available. Brenda, you have been on the calls, and I think you've been helpful. Are you available? Mr. Houston gave me a thumbs up.
Do we need her, though, if we're just arguing splits? Because I hate to bear when all we're doing is arguing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, she's been super helpful, but I think we'll get
I am available on the
Brenda, they're saying, since you cannot hear them, that they're not sure necessarily that you need to be there. You've been helpful, but right now it just sounds like we're ironing out the splits, the percentages, that sort of thing. And if we have questions, we gotta always send you a follow-up email.
That's fine. I will tend to visit on the calendar, and you guys can let me know that week whether you do or don't need me that night.
Brenda, can you let us know if there's anything else we are missing that we should also add to the agenda?
What was that?
Is there anything else that we are missing that we should be discussing currently? If, I don't feel like we're getting very close only to bring up some other contentious topic that we haven't discussed yet.
So I think that you're aware of the topics that, you know, have to be negotiated, the that we talked about today and have been talking about, the term, the rate, the contributions from each party, the split of the income tax. Those are the big negotiation items. The other things that we're going to have to get in place procedurally are, you know, the parcels to be included, the legal descriptions, the maps, the economic development plan, those kinds of things that are more procedural and will require people to pay attention to and, you know, edit, but don't necessarily require the kind of negotiation that is going on on these issues.
Okay, that sounds good. I think we'll, we'll let you know if we need you. It sounds like maybe we don't for the next one. Looking around. Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much, Brenda.
At that, I pointed, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I will
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm not going to.
I have an email with a question from tonight that I had to get back to you on.
I believe I heard Mr. Stubbs make a motion to adjourn and Mrs. Reed a second. Any discussion of that motion?
Yes, we would like to hear what Brenda was saying. We couldn't hear it, and we were talking over her when we made a motion to adjourn. So we could hear her, that would be great.
When I heard her, I was, go ahead, Brenda.
I just said, I have two open questions that I need to get you answered, and so I will get those and email them to Brian to distribute to others.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Still have that motion to adjourn.
I had it first and a second. Any discussion of the motion?
No.
Hi. Thank you.
You are adjourned. Thank you very much. Good night, everyone.